Hello, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to call or this regularly scheduled meeting of the Verona Jersey Town Council for May first, twenty twenty-three. Please read our public meetings.
The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with the expectation this meeting of the town council. The meeting time date were included in the meeting notice along with the the meeting day and, I'm sorry, meeting time and date were included in the public meeting notice along with the public internet link and telephone call in information. Said notice, the meeting agenda was posted in the municipal building and sent to the official newspaper of the township, the Verona City Road Times and the Star Ledger, at least forty-eight hours preceding the start time of this meeting. The agenda and handouts can be viewed online at veronaj.org/councilmeetings. A public comment period will be held in the orders listed on the agenda and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Matt. Would you please call the wall?
Councilman Holland? Here. Councilman Tamara?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Here.
Mayor Roman?
Here.
We are also in the meeting tonight is Township Attorney Brian Aloya, Township Manager Joe Biarco, and myself, municipal clerk Jennifer.
I'm not sure. Please, like some questions. Pleasure.
Legion. Of the United States of America. And we're public for peace and one nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Very much. So we have a cool house here in the chambers tonight. We have the boys and girls eighth grade Spurbin basketball teams here tonight. Honored them just both on incredible seasons. I was able to go to the boys game championship game. I did miss the girls game because I had a planning board meeting that night. But what I did get to see on the game I was at was just an incredible gameplay. I would like to ask if anyone from the coaching staff is here this evening that wants to speak before we go through a presentation. I'll talk a little bit about about the the boys game that I saw in a minute. Anyone that wants to come up at all?
Will you go first? Of course, I'll make first.
I've got the record right there.
Oh, I gotta go here.
Yeah, make sure there's a red light.
I prefer to speak to them and speak to you guys because I can yell at them.
Thank you.
First off, thank you all for having us, Mayor and all council members. Thank you and everybody for showing up. Obviously, you know, winning a championship is a great honor, right? But I think winning it for your town isn't even isn't even greater honor, right? This is a it's a wonderful town. We've been involved with basketball person, myself, my wife and some others for many years. And the one thing nobody seems to point out is Verona is very little town, small town in the relative grand scheme of the geography of Essex County. And this year, David and the former Verona, you know, really enjoyed slaying Goliath sixteen times. We went sixteen and oh this season, so to go undefeated after a journey in fifth grade where we didn't make a championship, didn't make playoffs, sixth grade COVID, seventh grade loss in a championship game, and then to to win the way we won this year, which was was fantastic. The one thing we preached to this team was to play for the name of the New Jersey, which is the most important thing, which is Verona. Right? And that's the one thing they'll remember for the rest of their lives is the memories that they built, playing together as a team, one unit, playing for one town, building a memory that will last them a lifetime. That gym when when we play in it is one of the greatest assets, I think, in youth sports that we have in this town, right? It's it's our little MSG. It's called Horrible Acoustics, which we use very much to our advantage, right? So God bless the architect for making that that change on our behalf. But really, it's not about the players on the court, you know, just as them celebrating. There's a lot of us. There's all the parents. Got to go to thank them. I've said a lot, not easy to play for and demanding, but at the end of the day, there was an outcome here and we achieved our outcome. We have a wonderful infrastructure in this town, right? The court we get to play on night in, night out, practice on it. The facility is phenomenal as youth sports go. It's as good as you're going to get, right? We have support staff, the site managers, you know, Mike McMahon is constantly supporting us. We've we built a great rapport with them, especially John Wans. I laugh. I used to, I used to make the boys run if they missed foul shots. And they were pretty good at making foul shots. So we're doing something right. So I get John Wans to start taking foul shots. Well, John Wans became the best free throw shooting site manager in Essex County history. He started making foul shots. So we we just had to make him run just for making run sake, but it's it's those people that make this really, really special. And obviously, we have the unwavering support of Recreation Department under Jim Cunningham, which, you know, is really attributed to a big part of the baseline and the backbone of the success we have as a team. These boys will look back wherever they go in life, wherever they take on, you know, a coaching role, they'll be blessed that they actually had a really strong foundation in Verona, right? The community aspect of this, Mayor Roman, I tell you, that gym was absolutely rotten. We turned people away. I did not realize this till the end, turning people away to come to a free sporting event that was really the embodiment of community, which is really what's great about this little town. So they get all the congratulations. They scored all the points. I did all the elegant screaming and all Coach Dave and Coach Jeff and and all those parents supporting, but we do love that the town supports all youth programs as a whole, and we continue to grow these sports in this wonderful little place. So we thank you all very much for that.
Coach, can you say your name? You can give your name.
Kieran Quinn. I think there ain't too many Irish guys coaching basketball in this town. So thank you very much for all your support. Really appreciate it, and they deserve all the recognition.
Do we have someone for the girls team?
Yes.
Please.
You telling God, not the Irish guy.
Balance of trade.
I am Dave Armando, and I've coached these these young women for the the last probably six years, four years representing Verona. So we want to thank you guys for having us here tonight. They fell short this year, win a championship, but the fact that you're recognizing them, the way they have represented Verona these last four years is very deserved that they're being recognized. And I can't say enough about this group, hardest working group. They set the benchmark in that league from the outset, and they won the championship their first year. And they got knocked out the last two years in memorable fashion each and every time. And it took everyone's best effort to beat you guys. But the thing I miss most, and we ended the season, I guess, what was our last practice? Ellie, what was it? I miss being in the gym with these guys, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate how much you guys represented Verona, the way you represented them. And it is a it is a memory I will cherish forever. Kieran said a lot of thanks. Jim Cunningham, as always, with the support. And I'm going to thank my parents. You guys were the best group of parents I've ever had. And it's been a great, great four years. So thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you very much. Like I said, I did not have the opportunity to join at the girls game, but I heard I missed just an incredible game. It's about the entirety of the season, all of the work you put into it. And I heard that this one, you guys were tough. And I just want to congratulate you on all of your accomplishments and your achievements. The boys game, as Kieran said, hack house, just like, you know, the hottest ticket in county, though there weren't tickets. One of the things that I did want to say specifically about this game was that what I saw out there was sportsmanship. Anytime a player from the opposing team fell down or something, there was a Verona player right there next to them. Just the boys just did an outstanding job of running, representing their community. So same sort of thing. I know a ton of hard work went into this. I just want to congratulate each and every one of you. So thank you very much for being such upstanding representatives of your community. We have presentations here for everybody this evening. I'm going to see, we'll do these as we'll do these as groups for each team. We'll do the girls teams first. I'll read what these say. They say, "In recognition of your exceptional performance and outstanding achievements, your hard work, dedication, perseverance have been instrumental in your success. And on behalf of the township of Verona, we are honored to recognize your accomplishments. Is with great pleasure that I, Alex Roman, mayor of the township of Verona, award the certificate of recognition presented on this first day of May in the year twenty twenty-three, signed Alex Roman, mayor." And I'm going to ask, read names, and we can do a group photo.
Yeah.
All right. So the team has, and please forgive me if I mispronounce anything, Emma Armando. I'm actually gonna come down here. If you just want to come up while we're while we're reading. Yeah.
Thanks. I'll take mine.
All right. Okay. We'll do this. Emma?
Thank you.
All right. Lexia Guarino? Congratulations. Kylie Haggerty? Leah Haggerty? Julia Romaco? Ellie Marateo? Riley Joan McCollum? Marley? Molly? Morgan Rossi?
Let's just back it.
Yeah. There's a lot.
A couple of those maybe.
Yeah. Was that? Yeah, why don't we do that one again or?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. You guys have been a team together. You're calling him, right?
I'll do the other side here.
Show us. You got the stack a little bit.
No, if the council too.
Down to the middle.
No, you don't.
Good.
You're good. All right, ready? One, two, three. You're much better. All right. For our boys team. Andrew Armando? Ryan Barrow? Thank you. Peter Hammond?
Oh, check that out.
Benjamin Vermaat, he wanted to stand in the middle of the group when we take the picture.
Like lost out on that.
Exactly. A chain around his neck. John Romano. Daniel Man? Man? Jimmy Nakbar? Lupnarek? You nip? Karen Hood? Thank you. And they'll do the same thing when we back up towards the day here to forget everybody in one. Hold on. Yeah, exactly.
Why don't you come come down?
Yeah, let's let the coaches.
Dave. Come on. Come on. Drive the school staff. Sure. Sure. I know I need her.
All right, ready? One, two, three. In general, thank you to our entire coaching staffs, our recreation staff, all of our parents, everybody. This is this is something that in Verona, we really value, and we're very proud of all of our student athletes. So thank you so much. You guys can stay if you want. I know we're doing a political housing update. We've got some bond ordinances. Tonight's a barber.
We can't get out fast enough.
Are we that boring? No. I'm just gonna give it just a second.
Thanks for showing up.
The test.
All right. Point high, Malway, invite the gold trail, the county of Essex.
Dear Mayor and Council, I'm a little disappointed that I got preempted by the girls and the boys basketball team.
All right.
On behalf of the county executive, I'd like to congratulate both teams and God bless them. They did a great job. And the coaching staffs, I know it's a very difficult thing to be out there day and night with the team. So congratulations on behalf of the county executive and myself. A couple of things. Well, May sixth, which is this weekend, we have at ninety-nine Bradford, we have our household waste recycling. So it'll be open from around eight thirty until noon time. And hopefully, anybody in Essex County can come out and bring some hazardous waste that they have lying around in their garages and in their basement. And hopefully, they get there, rain or shine. Saturday, May twentieth, we have electronic recycling, also at the same location, ninety-nine Bradford, same time, and bring your old TVs and stereos, et cetera. So both those days are important days. And then they haven't come up with the date, but we also have a shredding day in the near future also. Getting to the parks, which I would have loved to have been on first because I could have told them about the fishing derby in Verona Park. And we have a lot of younger people here who would have participated from fifteen below at Verona Park. And that is on May twenty-fourth, starts at five P M. for registration, six P M. for fishing, and seven P M. for awards. Also, on May eighteenth, that will be at Grover Cleveland Park for another fish fishing derby. It's the same time, five registration, six fishing, and seven P M. for awards. Verona Park will also have on the twentieth and twenty-first of May, the Fine Arts and Craft Sale at Verona Park. The other thing, May twentieth, at the the trying to think of the right word, the park on Upper Mountain Avenue, it is the
Anderson Park or the other one in the middle?
No, it's the one in the middle of the street, which I can't. It's usually in the fall. They have gardens to glow, which the Irish park. I have to read it here, but they do have flowers blooming. It's a great event. It's a beautiful park. It's across the street from their pool and their tennis courts in Montclair, close to Verona. So if you want to come out and see a very, very nice day, May twentieth, hopefully, it's in beautiful weather. I think that's about it. The other thing is we are still giving out, there's a new shot that comes out for COVID. We are doing children at Verona at Cedar Grove, the O'Toole Center on Thursdays for young people. And we still also have our mobile van out there giving shots out for COVID. But there is a new strain, another new strain and new vaccine coming out for older adults.
That was mentioned on the mayor's call this month. And again, I have to give a lot of credit for the fantastic information that comes out on those calls. How nice it is to hear from so many different departments of the county with everything that they have.
We have a lot going on. The other thing is also that if you see some large vehicles and dumpsters, we are doing stump grinding in Verona Park. And we will not be doing tree trimming this year unless something comes down. But we are doing stump removal, and that's why you probably see some big machinery out there, et cetera.
All right. Questions, comments?
Just I thank you so much for your following up with the Parks Department on the Verona Park Conservancy request on the removal from the children's garden. And then I think Councilman Holland, we we're just curious if the what the longer term plans are in the park for pickleball and on those tennis courts.
I know we're doing renovation in Grover Cleveland. I don't know if I haven't heard at all it's on this year's agenda. It may be I'll find out through the Parks Department or Engineering. But as of right now, I know Grover Cleveland is going to get some pickleball courts and updating of that tennis. We went out to bid in the last month or so, so that'll be on the agenda. I haven't heard anything about Corona as of right now.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Colton? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A couple of things on my list this evening. Councilman McAvoy is not here tonight. I wanted to offer my condolences again on the passing of his mother, Angelica McAvoy. Services were earlier today. Just, you know, I wanted to recognize my council colleagues and pictures where everybody was, you know, very much there for the McAvoy. The McAvoy family and and just wanted to say that was, you know, we are a little family up here. So it's just kind of nice to see everybody come out like that. Wanted to thank the proud family as well as Father Worley and our related like just for just taking wonderful care of, you know, Jack is pretty much one of my best friends in this town. So this was a day I needed to be there for. So just wanted to recognize that. Also, I wanted to recognize from the township, the meet resident meeting that we had for residents on Anne Cypress and Willow. Chuck did a fantastic job there. We brought everybody together that was, you know, sort of concerned about the project that's going on there. And every answer that we were able to give these residents was we'll take care of it. You know, Chuck basically said, I'll be out there tomorrow, six thirty A M., whatever, whatever your issues are. We'll make sure they're taken care of and make sure the project is done well. One of the things that really impressed me about how we manage projects was the attention to making sure that the large issues, the reason why we're doing the projects in storm drainage and, you know, trees and things like that are handled, but also all the small details, like making sure that everybody's driveways don't have a bump at the end of them when we pave the road and so on. And so, you know, the care that our public works department puts into managing projects in this town and our responsiveness to our residents was very much on display. So I have to give Chuck a lot of credit as to, you know, how willing he was to work with our residents. And, you know, we knew it, but it was nice to see, you know, in person. Wanted to also recognize both the Islamic Center of Verona as well as the Islamic Center of Essex County. I was able to attend their Eidol Fidur celebrations, which were just an amazing celebration. They're a celebration of faith, but also they're just a great party as well. They, you know, celebrates the end of the month of Ramadan and that they make sure that you are very well fed there. And it's just a just a great, you know, coming together of everybody there. I was able to sit down at a table and eat with a lot of new friends. And everybody's families were out there just having a just a fantastic time. So wanted to recognize those congregations for their presence in our community and and hope that they that that went well for them. Also wanted to mention from yesterday, I did get some phone calls about East Street Place, actually, I might have been did before yesterday at this point. We did have a number of sewer backups in the area that's still related to I N I. I believe I heard that we had eleven million gallons going into the plant. Obviously, you know, the the staff there had pumps set up and was working as quickly as they possibly could to get the flow to go down. It's just a consistent reminder of the fact that that is an issue that we need to be aware of, and we need to be getting, you know, better at every single year, just making sure that we can take care of our residents, even under worst of storm conditions. So committed to continuing all of our infrastructure work to make sure that's resolved. With that, I will pass it over to Marco.
Thank you, Mayor. In in deference to the staffs that you have here by May, Mayor, which could be a portion of housing team, come up and give you their briefings, when you view the ordinances that are needed and the status with the master and political house.
I'm sorry, the the microphones here do not really go into the speakers as well. They're mostly for recording the meeting for legal records. So we'll try and speak up a little bit better so that you can hear us. If we if we turn the speakers way, the microphones can be back a lot. I'm sorry about that.
So thank you, Mayor Council. Pleasure to be back. Jamie R. Potek, P L A C E K of the Dakota's Firm. And we're here with the entire team tonight, both Dan Haven, DMR, who is the planner, who's been handling issues of affordable housing, and now also Laura Mangello, who you have engaged as your administrative agent as required by the September fifteen, twenty twenty order. As you know, everything started back with that order, and now we are finally back. And due to the efforts in large part of Dan, while we had kept our end of the schedule with the documents and everything being turned over to the the special master and fair share last fall, it took them longer than anticipated to review and comment. And so because of their review and comment, additional changes were made, and now we are finally back, and it all starts tonight. Tonight, you have the ordinance on for introduction, which is your affordable housing and development fee ordinance. And that lays the structural framework for you to ensure compliance with your affordable housing obligations as things move forward. On May twenty-fifth will be for the planning board, and they will hear and hopefully at that time adopt the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan, which part of that is a spending plan component. We will then be back here in June, I believe, on June twelfth for the moving forward of your endorsement by way of resolution of your housing element pressure plan and spending plan and the other formal act that needs to be taken at that time. And then once all those formal actions are accomplished, we will be moving forward with obtaining a date from the court for final hearing for final judgment of repose, which will forever protect you for the rest of the round and moving forward from developers' actions. And at this point, I will turn it over to Dan Haven. Should you have any formal questions with respect to the documents before you tonight for the housing element pressure plan and that moving forward. But we're pleased to report that we, you know, we all know why we're here. This is all compelled upon this town and upon this body as representative of this town. And thanks to your guidance and direction, we're where we need to be and where you need to now be to be in compliance. And we now have a happy special master, and we have a happy fair share housing center, and that's where you need to be. So I'll turn it over to Dan for the rest. Did you have any questions for him? But I thank you. It's been a pleasure getting to this point, and we're forward to sharing this, taking this forward to completion. And then through the efforts of Laura Mangello carrying you forward, these new developments you have ongoing are ultimately brought forward to completion, and they are ready to be occupied with not only marketplace and market rate tenants, but the also the affordable housing tenants that will be through her process. Thank you.
Very much.
Good evening. Jamie covered a lot of what I was going to say, but I'm gonna just go through my much feel without too much redundancy. So DMR, as you may remember, we were brought on back in, I believe, July or August of twenty twenty-two. We promised at that time that we would have our everything on our end completed for in order for the township to be able to adopt everything in need by December. We had submitted everything that we were supposed to prepare, ninety percent of what we had to prepare to the special master and fair share housing center in late October, and they didn't get back to us until January or February, which is why we are now we're just now in the stage where we can adopt everything. So we have, as Jamie said, we've we've sent everything to the special master to review, and she's confirmed that she's comfortable with everything that we prepared, which is the housing plan, the various resolutions and ordinances, the operating manuals for the affordable units, which Laura will be using in her role as the administrative agent to make sure that they comply with the Fair Housing Act, the COA rules that are still in effect and DCA rules that are in effect. And as well as the settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, she says she's great with it. So we're ready to go. So tonight, you're on your agenda, you're introducing the the amended affordable housing ordinance and development fee ordinance. And what that does, the affordable housing ordinance outlines the rules for creating, administering and marketing and managing affordable housing units. And development fee ordinance identifies the process for collecting fees from new development, which would go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The language in these documents is is standard. It comes from various affordable housing regulations that the the ordinance is supposed to replicate. So the affordable have, for example, the affordable housing affordability or the uniform housing affordability controls is the language that we have to replicate to that that details how affordable units are supposed to be administered to affordable houses, to low income households, and how they're supposed to be marketed. So the the language from that or that regulation is in the ordinance, the language from COA rules regulating the construction of inclusionary housing, for example, the the project on Sunset Avenue is in there. And then language that's required by the settlement with settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center is in there. And a lot of that is sort of just mundane rules as to how you determine how the affordable, the the incomes change, the the income calculations change every year. So it it there's not really, this isn't your typical ordinance where, you know, the town has the ability to modify things. This is a very standard straightforward ordinance that frankly you have to adopt in order to comply with your settlement agreement and and receive the judgment of compliance from the court. So after tonight, the timeline would be, you know, you introduce the ordinance tonight. When we, the planning board meeting on May twenty-fifth, we will present the affordable, the housing elements and fair share plan to the planning board. They would adopt the housing elements and fair share plan, which includes, which by talking to itself includes the spending plan. And then when we come back here, I believe, whatever your June, your first June meeting is, you And then when we come back here, I believe, uh, whatever your June, your first June meeting is, um, you would be adopting resolution endorsing the housing plan. Uh, you would be adopting this ordinance and you would be adopting, uh, some other resolutions that are required to, uh. Give validity to other pieces of the, um, the housing plan, including the spending plan and the affirmative marketing plan. Uh, which, uh, relates back to Laura's work. Um, so I think I'm starting to get, uh, redundant in terms of what Jamie said, so I'm gonna pause here and, uh. Uh, take questions if you'd like, or Laura, if you.
Well, the main thing is, all right, looking, looking forward from here, obviously, we've got the next round coming up around the corner. A lot of this work is compliance for this round and also establishing the framework. Are there any other things that we need to be doing now? Um, whether by regulation or by recommendation in terms of preparatory work for the following rounds of affordable housing?
Um, so no one knows what the next round is gonna look like, uh, yet. Uh, the best guess is from people I've spoken to is that. Round four is gonna look a lot like the last eight years have, uh, looked like, which is, uh, to mean that the. Uh, it's likely going to be a process between municipalities and the courts. Uh, which may or may not involve Fair Share Housing Center as a mediator, the way it has been in the last eight years. No one knows. Um, uh, and, uh, you know, if that's the case, then what you're going to, what the township is going to want to do is be, be prepared for on July first of twenty twenty five to have. Uh, uh, submitted a declaratory judgment to the court, uh, seeking to have itself. Um, found compliant with the Fair Housing Act. Uh, who knows if you're gonna have affordable housing numbers yet, where in which you know what your obligations would be. So like I said, no one knows what the process is and the state hasn't taken action. Um, and, uh, you'll want to work with, uh, myself and your other professionals to, uh, determine, um. What your options are, uh, to, uh, to be prepared to comply and that includes finding properties that. May be suitable for inclusionary housing or, uh, if it makes sense in another a hundred percent project. Uh, identifying programs, uh, smaller programs like accessory. Uh, dwelling units and other things that are permitted in, in, uh, or, or identified in Co's rules. Um. Uh, I think it's really just a matter of preparing for the possibility that the, the fourth round is a thing and that. Uh, it's not gonna, that the state isn't gonna intervene and just be being prepared for anything, uh, between now and then.
I'll pause a little bit. Mr. Lloyd, do you have any, it was everything he said procedurally to your agreement?
Yeah, we look fine. I reviewed all the documents submitted and they did a great job.
Okay, so anyone else on the council have any questions?
Um, yes, I have a whole bunch of questions about the ordinance, just so I could understand it better. So thank you. Um. So throughout the ordinance, it references low and moderate housing and then in a few places. It gets into very low, but so I guess in general, like when it's referencing low and moderate, does. The low actually mean low and very low?
It does. Yeah, that, that's sort of been the case since about two thousand eight is when anybody says low, level includes very low, except when it says it doesn't.
Okay, and that's a little bit of argument where for anyone, you know, listening or any audiences referencing the, the, um. The income levels of the people who would be living there and there's different thresholds. Okay. So on, in the very beginning, on section G, it talks about a ten year protection period. So, but for us, does that mean we only have?
It's really two years, a year and a half.
Okay.
Actually, two years more or less, uh, for, depending ba- based on the adoption.
Because the next round is about to start.
Yeah, exactly.
It just took us a long time to get here.
Yeah, it took a lot of towns a long time to get.
Yes, okay, um, great. Um, I have a general question and may also be for Laura, like what happens if someone is, you know. They get a spot in one of these, uh, apartments and then. They start to become very successful in their career and their income goes up. Like what? Happens to someone's ability if their income goes higher or lower? Uh, what ends up, or they become unemployed? What happens to that person just in a unit?
Laura, I can answer that unless you'd rather, and, and if I say the wrong thing, you can tell me I'm wrong. Uh, so there is a recertification process. I believe that it's. Uh, in which, uh, the, uh, the tenants have to continue to submit their, uh, income and pre, uh, proof and obviously if, if they're. Buying it's fraud and, uh, and what have you. Uh, uh, so there is a process for making sure that they continue to comply.
So, but if their income rises, does that mean they may lose that apartment and they have to move?
I, they don't have to move, but their rent would not be a horrible rent.
Oh, their rent's not horrible.
They would have to pay just market rate.
Okay, now for, for owner units, owner occupied units, which you do not have at this point, you don't, they, you can still continue to own it. But again, when they're sold, it's sold as an affordable unit. So if you buy it as affordable, you don't, uh, experience a windfall. You don't sell it at market rate.
Yeah.
As long as those affordability controls are in place, when they sell, it's only able to be sold at a certain price. You know, so they, so they don't reap the windfall. It stays within your block of affordable housing units.
Okay.
And it, and it stays under that control.
Okay. Another broad question I have is that right now Verona has, uh, senior affordable housing that I think maybe section eight or. So is, does this cover section eight and are they gonna be covered in this process?
Section eight housing that was constructed during a certain time period is permitted to count towards your affordable housing, uh, uh, uh. Program. So the project that you're referring to is in the plan. There's only a certain number of, uh, of units can be applied. To any round. So currently it's twenty five percent of anything, your, your obligation calculated from nineteen eighty seven to today. So actually there's a, a leftover amount of units that can be applied in the future rounds, which. You know, the twenty five percent will likely still apply, uh, and unless, uh, something happens to that building where the, uh, the section eight controls on affordability. Are lifted, uh, it's, it can, uh, will likely continue to be applicable in future, uh, rounds.
But it's not governed by this new ordinance?
Uh, no, cause it's administered by the HMFA.
Oh, okay, right. That helps me. Um, and then can you just go through the whole development fee section? Um, and just explain kind of, I think it's section. Uh, one fifty dash twenty one, just like, can you put that in kind of layman's terms at a high level?
Sure.
Like what are development fees? When do they apply? Just, and what are we changing here for Verona?
Sure. Um, so let me actually answer the second part, but no, I might as well start from the beginning. It's easier.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so, uh, there's the, the, uh, Fair Housing Act and Co's rules, uh, uh, started, uh. Uh, originally allowed for, uh, municipalities to collect residential development fees and non-residential development fees, uh, uh. Residential development fees, you can collect up to one percent of the change in, uh, the equalized assessed value. Uh, of a residential property as a result of, uh, uh, either reconstruction or additions and with, uh, with certain, uh, exceptions, uh. And the same thing applies to non-residential development, except it's two point five percent. There are, uh, increased percentages on projects that get a. Uh, uh, a density variance or F F A R variance that allows them to, uh, exceed the permitted densities and, and floor area ratios. In the subject zone. So that, that is six percent, um, under, uh, toll rules. Um, so, uh, developer, uh, uh, wants to tear down, somebody wants to tear down their house or, well, maybe let's certainly set up a house, let's use a business. They want to tear down a non, uh, non-residential, uh, maybe let's say a single story. Uh, uh, gas station, they tear it down, they want to do a like three story office building. They have to. Uh, pay a fee equal to two and a half percent of the change in the equalized assessed value from that gas station. To the three story office building. Uh, they pay half upfront, half, uh, after it's been constructed. Uh, and there are certain exceptions that are stated here. So, uh, I think so, for example, with residential, if your house was burned down from a fire and you rebuild, I don't think you're subject to this. Uh, and if you're a, if you're a, uh. Uh, non-resident or non-residential residential development that has affordable housing units in your, in your project, you don't have to pay a, a development fee. Um, so, uh, the, now onto the second question of what's changed, this, uh. Other, there are only two things have changed between what you have currently and what's in this, uh, ordinance. One is just. Uh, updating the language to, uh, be, uh, been more comprehensive, uh, and detailed about the process for collection and, and use of those fees. Uh, and the second thing is that, uh, the township did not originally have a non-residential development fee portion of their ordinance. However. The state actually requires every town in, in, in New Jersey to collect non-residential development fees at, uh, uh. When there's a non-residential project. And if you don't have a, uh, municipal non-residential development fee ordinance, you have to send that money to the state's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Which they don't really, I'm just pointing it to space now, uh, uh, which, uh, they don't, often don't use for affordable housing. It's one of those type of accounts that's raided frequently. So by having this ordinance, which you're required to have, you can actually use those funds, um, for, uh, for municipal purposes.
Okay.
So you could put that into your trust. You were not doing that in the past, although you're required to. I don't know if you were actually collecting the non-residential fees and, and putting it into, uh. Sending to the state. A lot of towns more and more of this requirement, don't do it.
There's extraordinarily little non-residential development that's been taking place this, yeah, over the last few years, so.
I'm gonna turn around to Jamie. He can tell me if I've got anything wrong. Cool.
Okay, those were my questions. So thank you so much.
No problem.
Anyone else on the council have questions? Um, Mr. Biarco, are you looking for us to pull this package forward at this point in the meeting or are you?
Yes, Mayor. You could do that.
Okay. All right. So we have here, um, the introduction of the ordinance for, uh, the, for, uh, that we mentioned for affordable housing. Um, and then we have the having trust fund resolution. Uh, are those the only two that you're, uh, looking for? Dedication by rider or do we, uh?
We don't need to.
Good night, that's all.
Good night. All right, um, and, uh, does anyone, uh, I would need a motion to change the order of business on the agenda, uh, to, uh. In Aga to, uh, bring forward H one and, uh, K.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. And it's supposed to be, the ordinance has to be referred to the planning board. I don't remember if I sent that or not.
Right, our introduction results in it, right, in it being represented to the planning board or, or, uh, referred to the planning board. Uh, so do we have a motion to change the order of business? Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Nice.
Okay, um, so we'll now consider, uh, or both ordinance H one on first reading. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of that ordinance into the record?
Repealing Article nineteen of Chapter one fifty of the Code of the Township in its entirety and replacing with a new Article. Nineteen Affordable Housing.
Okay, can somebody please move the ordinance?
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor McGrath, do I have a second?
Second.
Move by council, move second by Councilman Tamborough. Um, this is, uh, only, uh, first reading, so there is not a public hearing at this time.
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tamborough?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
We're, uh, H one R will be numbered twenty twenty three dash seventeen. Um, it is introduced, four zero will be referred to the planning.
Okay, thanks very much. And after that consistency review, then the second, uh, uh, hearing will be scheduled?
Yes.
Right, um, and then we will look at resolution number K one, which is dedication by Ryder, uh, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, looking, do you like to move that resolution?
Oh, I'll move it, Mayor, but we do need that public comment.
Yes, I was planning, I was planning, I wanted to, in a second. Um, do I have a second on that resolution?
Second.
Uh, affected by Deputy Mayor. All right, so we'll call for public comment on this resolution only. Madam Clerk, please read the public comment statement.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this resolution only, you may press a lecture and if you're. Um, attending via Zoom, raise virtual hand by pressing the raised hand button on your monitor. When you are identified, clearly state your name. And township only for the record, you have four minutes to address the council. I'm just, this resolution, um. For Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Yep. Um, just let me know when a public comment is open.
So.
Okay. Uh. You know, if anyone is, uh. Keep seconds. That's all. Okay, I'll now close public comment on this resolution. Any council discussion? Same then. Madam Clerk, could you please call the board?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tamborough?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Mayor K one with the number resolution twenty twenty three dash eight. Zero and five.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, thank you to our professionals for your update.
See you next week.
Um, so now we will, uh, move it back over to. Biarco.
My agenda reads, reads a draft. Five, so I'm, asking the waiting.
Sure, if we can, this evening, we can, we had one person who would be here, rest of the audience very well, so. Uh, please, sorry, just.
Um, I didn't leave six on my agenda for a great, uh, study for water, waiting for a proposal from one of the firms. Uh, and a number of firms that were recommended, um, when that proposal comes in, I'll review that. Into local agreement with the court is proceeding, uh, during some of the final stages. Police Department has already met with the, uh, shared court services on those procedures. And the agreements will be going to the, uh, Office of Administrative Law, which. Uh, they have to review them. There may be some minor language edits. There usually is, uh, which means it'll be back for the mayor's signature again. I have met with, uh, Cedar Grove and our staff relative to the potential interlocal agreement of fire prevention. Which we would be the lead agency on that one. We've met with our fire prevention officers, uh, myself and the administrator there. And. Uh, Steve is gonna, uh, run through the reports on Boswell Engineering, uh, the recreation field, Juicers and Everett Field. We've had a number of meetings on those and Steve will be taking on, um, those, uh, assignments. Close session, we, we hopefully will discuss the, uh, organizational chart amendments, which I dropped in your folders. Including a revision to the town code that may be necessary to move, uh, buildings and grounds into DPW. It's in your code and, you know, reverse. Include session, um. I have, uh. Personnel matters to discuss and contract items.
And, uh. Negotiations, uh, property purchases.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Biarco?
I, I have one. Um, in your conversations with Cedar Grove, are, have you, I've. Gone through the steps to implement the flood control board with Cedar Grove?
Yeah, they, they have, uh. Introduced, uh, the similar to ours and we're discussing additional communities to bring in.
So they introduced, but they didn't adopt?
Right, it's pending.
Okay, is that, is that what's going on? Basically, they're just looking, they want to expand it before we really.
Well, they're, they're restructuring managers.
Right, right. They have, that is a big difference as they have a.
It appears that there is no issues and they're moving together on this.
Okay, great.
Can I just get a further point of clarification? So if. Through their process, they wanted to bring in another town, like, say, and that we would then have to go through our ordinance again to update, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, hopefully what any, any community we can bring in along the Pacman and. Tributaries, uh, that's been the discussion, we just keep doing it. Uh, there's more power in the more communities that we have on board.
I would agree. It just would be nice to get started, but understood that it's out of our hands.
Yeah, the two of us are moving collectively, but we're trying to get more communities involved.
Right, I think that the point is well taken that, uh, certainly this is laudable. We just want to make sure that it doesn't hold up any of the, the work of the two communities being able to speak together with a unified voice and then.
Understood.
Forward on this.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any more questions for Mr. Biarco? Do you want to bring down Mr. Neal up?
Yes.
Good evening. Um, I'll move relatively quickly through some of them and touch on some highlights. Um, Grants, Senator Booker has recommended our well projects to the Subcommittee on Interior and Environment for potential funding. Um, which is good news. That's the only one we've heard back on so far. Um, so hopefully we'll keep moving that forward. Uh, we did receive notice, um, of a, an award for seventy five thousand dollars from, through the local recreation improvement grant, uh, through the DCA. For possible pool, tennis and pickleball courts, um, on that, that side lot down there. Um, are, we do have a project, um, with a bid opening scheduled for May tenth for, this is a CDBG project from twenty twenty one, actually. So we're looking forward to finally completing this one. This is for various, um, ADA curb ramps. Around town at, at all different intersections throughout town. Um, we did receive ninety thousand dollars from CDBG for this project and hope to utilize, um, all of that for, for the curves. Um, the Boswell update. We're actually gonna have them in. We'll have representatives in to report at the May fifteenth meeting. Um. Think it's easier just to kind of let them provide an update on where they're at also, since there's so many projects going on. And allow you to ask some questions. We'll have a little bit of back and forth with them. So they will be here on, on May fifteenth. Road reconstruction projects, um, Anne Cypress and Willow is moving. Um, we did have a, a good meeting. The next one up is we're gonna have a residence meeting in mid-May. I think we're looking at the week of May twentieth, somewhere around there. Um, for the residence meeting, kind of kickoff meeting. Um, the contractor wants to get started, I believe in the beginning of June, uh, to really get going in there. Right now, our staff is finishing up the curb boxes, um, and then. Right now, our staff is finishing up the curb boxes, um and then the contractor should be able to get started.
And can you just confirm if the administration's made a final decision on whether or not we're replacing more water sewer in that area?
Yeah, I think um talking with Chuck today, actually, we are not going to move forward with additional water main, so we are gonna get Anne Cypress wrapped up, uh so milling and paving. As long as weather cooperates, they're moving along very nicely now with the curb and sidewalk work, um we should be looking, you know, within a month, I would say, um to actually just go in, mill, and pave that and get that done this summer.
Right, I I did walk that a little bit yesterday, and yes, the curving sidewalk looks great, uh I'm sure the residents will be very happy to, yes, uh pave and wrap up there, so.
Yeah, once we have a definitive timeline, we'll obviously put that out again to the residents and let them know.
Stephen, just thinking forward, is there a way to schedule construction projects in the future, are we doing this already? That we can have them done by November fifteenth? Do you see it to start a little bit later, if we could start now and maybe finish then?
Yes, so the goal is, even with some of the upcoming ones, we have planned like Boston, Whitney, Windermere, we'd like to have those started this summer and completed by the fall, we definitely don't like going from year to year and overlapping winter, um we kind of had a backlog of projects that we were running into with some of the DOT projects um that delayed us, so, yeah, we definitely want to avoid that in the future.
But I guess the question is, what ultimately do you feel is the cause of the backlog, is it, are professionals doing the engineering design, is it our project management capability, is it funding, is it contractor availability? Why do we, I I know that we have funds that fall into certain years that we need to spend, so sometimes we need to launch a project, but I guess that's the question, is why do we launch a project in June rather than in April?
I think this backlog that we're currently trying to get unclogged was actually kind of left over from COVID. Um that kind of delayed things, and then we started getting bumped and then stacked up. Um you know, and from a project management perspective, I think we could improve on that process too.
Right.
Funding, we're fine with the funding, DOT just kind of regulates when you can and cannot do work, um but the funding was was in place.
Okay, I mean, it would be, like, if we can figure out basically our projects, our project life length for a major road reconstruction, what's our worst case scenario? And we should know basically, what's the latest we realistically can start a major road reconstruction um in order to have it done by November with some buffer? I think honestly, that's, you know, and I I I very much appreciate that we have a process of continual improvement on project management, I always kind of feel like the after-action reports, the analysis and so on, we should be able to say, well, the last, you know, ten projects we've done have taken an average of, you know, six months from uh shovels in the ground to completion, therefore, we need to be working backwards from, you know, beginning of May in order to hit time or whatever, or whatever it is, so.
Yeah, it's definitely been a process too, just with the supply chain issues, um especially for some of the water projects, it has been a struggle, um some of the parts, you know, were twelve months out, so that was some of the delay, but we are working with Boswell on a road paving matrix to really help us plan ahead and analyze, so nothing should really be sneaking up on us anymore.
That's great.
Uh. Um just moving to some events, we have the Free Rabies Clinic on May third at the DPW Garage. We have our shredding event on Saturday, May sixth, from eight AM to twelve PM in the pool parking lot. We have the um motor vehicle mobile visit on May eighth at the Community Center, the AARP Safe Drivers Class, watching John, on uh May eleventh, that's the instructor right there, at the Community Center. Um mentioned the county events, and we also have the Senior Night Lual hosted by the juniors on May twenty-fourth. And just posted a flyer today for free blood screenings, which is the first Wednesday of the month, um held at the Community Center from eleven AM to one PM. And then lastly, we are gonna have our Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May twenty-ninth at ten AM. And skipping quick um update on Everfield, spoke to the engineers, they are doing some of the survey fieldwork, and they're just waiting on the topographic survey um before they're gonna give us some concepts. Hopefully by the end of May, we'll have a preliminary design and layout that we can present to you um at the June meeting. And just the last thing I do want to note is Green Acres, um we're working on a bunch of issues with Green Acres, but we did just receive notification that we were recommended for um seven hundred thousand dollars in funding for this recent round that we submitted for. We will get a formal letter about that, but that's what is in play right now.
This is principally the two um.
The two properties, yes.
Let me remind you, is it a total seven hundred thousand dollars, or it's every year?
Well, every year you'll clog, so that's the most you can get on this funding grant.
Yeah.
But eventually you'll get, um it's fifty percent of the purchase and the cost, some of the soft costs that you uh, or some of the costs that you incur. And you reverse that also, and it takes many years to get that fifty percent.
Right, they just parcel it out to you according to the budget of their program up to that maximum cap for your projects, so, but it's still the sooner we get that money, and the better, and also the uh, I would say the, we kind of glossed over that recreation grant, that's uh no small thing either for seventy-five thousand dollars. That, that's another one that I, you know, we get, celebrate, is that being a result of a good process internally, and I'm glad to see we're getting that.
We'll have more updates on that project, hopefully, pretty soon, we'll have some proposals together. Um and just on the Green Acres, we were kind of hoping for five hundred thousand to to see that seven hundred thousand dollar number was pretty nice.
We don't want to say that.
Yeah.
We were hoping for nine hundred.
We're hoping for three and a half million.
Alright, I have another question for Mr. Neal.
Please, uh, Mr. I just, Steve, I just want to thank you for when you do your reports, having the uh the brief written comments. Uh following reports as well, that's helpful to prepare for the meeting and and allows us to ask some good questions, so thank you for that.
Alright, thank you.
Sorry.
Um I just had a follow-up question regarding um Anne Street, um when you said that you're going to discontinue doing the utility infrastructure work, is that to say that we're going to be paving over what are otherwise broken pipes, or not replacing the storm drains that that with the bicycle safe crates, or or what is this?
So all the, all the, this was totally new scope of work, that wasn't anticipated originally, so the water main project that was done, that is totally completed, so that contractor is done and gone, that's sealed up. What wasn't added in the original spec was the rest of a loop. And it's from, Chuck would know better, if if we could have him on if you want, I think it's end to end, so it's a shorter stretch. So instead of doing everything in the entire complex, when they designed this work, it was just for the areas that they had a ton of issues in, they knew they had bad pipes in that one area. So that was all replaced with brand new, never had issues in this other section, so they decided to leave that out of the plan. Um so as we are going, you know, Chuck wanted to do a little bit, he's been working with the engineers to see, you know, what that would look like if we wanted to add that scope of work and and re-release a project. Um but having no, you know, real, I don't want to say it, but bad history in those areas, um everyone said they feel comfortable just moving forward, we'll pave it. In the future, if we get a water main break in there, the plan is to actually just mill curb to curb um and pave a a larger stretch of it, that second set it, so there would be no patchwork.
And I do agree with that, so going forward, is there a way that we can reconcile our paving schedule and projects with our asset management plan? So that we actually have a thoughtful analysis of of where the pipes are aging, not just based off of like, you know, kind of our anecdotal experience, like, well, we haven't had an issue yet, but like, this is actually based off of either acoustical testing or something to the like, so that we have an expectation of the pipes that are breaking down, so that we can then reconcile that with our paving schedule going forward.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's kind of the the thought process with some of the GIS mapping that we're trying to implement now too, so we can mark those spots, and we have record of it. Um so if it comes up in the future, we're gonna pave that road, we know we had five documented in our mapping, then step this up the.
Because I I do think that it's a missed opportunity, but I understand the desire for the neighborhood to have this project completed. Um but, you know, having lived in a neighborhood where the road was paved over unknown broken drain, like, if it is problematic, when we were um broken in the charger, like, so hopefully hopefully there is no broken infrastructure there, and we don't have to do patches after the fact.
Right, if I may add, I will, uh Chuck did actually kind of go through some of his thought process on this during the resident meeting. Um you know, Steve covered it very, very well, but it was only the water main that was that was of concern here, it was not um the storm drain or the uh or the sanitary sewers. Uh it was just whether or not, you know, where he experienced water main breaks, I agree with you that, you know, relying on institutional knowledge is great while we, you know, that we have it, but uh data is always the better long-term approach. Uh I know that he was going to seek testing on some of the other uh portions of water main. So, yes, I mean, I think that the 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 process was thoughtful, but I agree with you that just our long-term process improvement should include data tracking and uh and metrics as to when and why we replace water mains.
Well, I mean, it's the expectation of the law, having an asset management plan, and that has been a thoughtful approach going forward, is to sell that asset management plan that we're legally required to have with our paving schedule.
Right, yes.
Mayor, if I mean, least one, sorry, I don't.
No, I just without Mr. Neal on the uh uh the YouTube, Tony posted on the town website, it connects, I think, to the old playlist, if you click Watch Council meetings online, so you just update that link on the website to the current one, I just checked it, because it wasn't up.
I think this one, it maybe didn't say.
So the link that you gave to us is not the same one that's on the, yeah, website.
Yep, I'll make sure that's swapped out.
Any other questions for Mr. Neal?
Counsel of the day, I'm sure you've seen it already, um the engineering firms, the various ones we're using on various projects have timelines for us and administration, so that we can keep these projects on online in our time. There's also comprehensive reviews with all your staff in the firm that has a particular project, so that we can address those concerns in the future, and road paving projects are also being now coordinated with PSCNG, so we can capitalize on their paving, so we'll target roads where they're gonna do work, uh so we let PSCNG do the paving, so you'll see some changes as you move forward. Um so I think you'll see the the ways that we've been seeing on some of your projects, you also have the diversity of firms working uh simultaneously on some of your projects, which you've already seen.
Would you?
Yeah, I just want to jump in and say, um, you know, we also just need to also be thinking about that stormwater system and doing that analysis, so we can understand the age of the and the size of the pipes of the stormwater system as well, I mean, it's we have a lot of things that we need to manage, because again, if we're opening up a road and we know that we're undersized, is that the section of the stormwater system we want to upgrade, so we do have some more fundamental analyses to do, and and I know we're gonna get there, um and um I just want to thank the staff for working so hard, and I do want to thank Steve Neal. Um I think, Steve, your reporting that you're sending to us of the council is really getting to the level we need, it's a good level of detail, so I appreciate it.
And and just on on the stormwater, and it's a very good point, I think that what happens a lot of, what's happening is the stormwater is being engineered on the scope of the project. Um you know, so they are looking at that roadway, the inlets of pipes on that roadway, but again, in the context of the larger stormwater management system of, you know, we upsize a pipe here, but we really do need to go an extra, you know, fifty feet down this trunk road.
Yeah.
Um so I agree, that's kind of the next big step here, I think, is to develop the full analysis and and management plan on the stormwater management system, so that we get all of this right too.
And, you know, we had that really intriguing idea that Rutgers presented to us, that we, you know, the bypass that we haven't actually ever talked about, so we have, we have some good analysis to do, we all love analysis in these good days.
And a- analysis and engineering, so.
I do have just one, Mr. Diarcio, you referenced that you are in fact getting the infrastructure schedule list from PSCNG, I know that there was legislation passed last year, so they are providing that to you in accordance with legislation?
Yeah.
It should be, or has it already?
On your.
Okay.
I'd have asked.
Okay.
Alright, um Deputy Mayor's made a suggestion, we have a couple of folks in the audience here, um just unless uh unless you're looking to sit through all the rest of our meeting, what we'll do is we'll add a public comment uh session uh now, if anyone has any general public comment on any matter, um you're welcome to stay through the entire uh meeting, but just in case anyone wanted to get up and uh bring anything to our attention, um I'll offer that. And for us to do that, just, I would ask Madam Clerk, please read a general public comment statement, and then.
Alright. It's Zoom as well, right?
Correct.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matter? Um if you're attending in person, you may press a lecture, and if you're attending via Zoom, you may raise your virtual hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor. Once you are um identified and unmuted, clearly state your name and township for the record, you'll have four minutes to address the council on any item.
And we still will hold a general public comment meeting on consent agenda items, please, on consent agenda items, as well as one at the very end of the meeting.
Hi.
Just an additional opportunity, thank you, welcome.
My name is Regina Rachel, and I have a question for the council.
I'm sorry, what town do you live in? Verona?
Absolutely. No, I live in Nutley, and I decided to come over today.
Alright, please go ahead.
Anyway, um it has come to my attend, I'm a Verona resident now here for the past twenty-eight years. Um it has come to my attention recently um that the the council is thinking about putting a weed dispensary in the Pilgrim Shopping Center. And I want to know if this is true.
Um just so you know, for our for our procedures for public comment, um make, please make the entirety of your comments uh for your four-minute limit, and then we respond to all the comments as a whole, we just don't do it back and forth question and answer.
Oh, I see, so I should tell you, okay, because I am concerned um about this, I understand that there are two dispensaries already in Montclair, and by putting something in the Pilgrim Shopping Mall in that huge parking lot, which is really in front of Pompkin Avenue, it affects all of us, I feel. It affects the children and the families going into the Michael, uh uh the the pizzeria, uh us shopping in Kings, us utilizing that whole strip mall, and now that you're gonna be selling weed, I have no idea wh- how that could affect our community. And and this is something that I'm concerned with, and uh I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I'd like to know if that's really true.
Thank you, ma'am, we'll respond to you soon as we wrap up the rest of this public comment section, if anyone else wants to come up, you can. Once again, your your name and the.
Yes, good evening, James Tonko, Verona. Um I want to address the sewer backup. I want to thank the mayor for getting back to me on that. Um I don't know if the newest members know, newest council members know about this situation, uh but we've been dealing with it for many years. I want to know if if there's been any talk lately about what could be done, now we took Zephyr, Zephyr Ridge on on Grove, and we took the four hundred units right on Fabio. That comes to our plant, right? Yes, so as we increase that, we haven't done anything with the plant. My question is, what are we are we uh discussing for the future? And with the affordable housing, we keep increasing um the buildings, but we're doing all with the plant. I had, it was two horrible days, this time, it was two horrible days of not being able to do anything with the house, so I get a little nervous. Um so it's my question. I I've talked to Mr. Diarcio about it. Um just in the future, what, what, what are you guys discussing? And in the past, I've been told, oh, well, we meet the state standards. I don't buy it anymore. And I understand the volume, infiltration, I understand it all. What are we, is there anything we can do? That's my question.
Thank you. Uh anyone else for a public comment at the moment? Do we have anyone on Zoom with a hand raised? You're done, okay, last call. Okay, I will close. We have one, okay, two. Uh first commenter, please go ahead with your name and your city name.
Yeah, Kevin Ryan, Verona, New Jersey, uh just just a point of reference on your uh uh ordinance about the uh affordable housing, uh you just might want to make the scribners correction, there are references to Investor Savings Bank in the ordinance, I believe they have been taken over by Citizens Bank. So you might just want to see if you can correct them before you actually uh pass that along to the uh planning board, and uh I think it's uh one fifty dash twenty-one point eight, to be specific, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me know when the next commenter is. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Deb Aldiero, I live at one fifty-two Woodlands, I'm in Verona, lifelong Verona resident. I was also inquiring regarding the marijuana dispensary that I heard about uh in the Pilgrim Shopping Center, where I do do most of my food shopping, and my mother-in-law also owns a property at fifty-two Martin Road, which is about point four miles from the front door to Kings. Um I was just wondering about, I know this came up a few years ago, and it was kind of tabled or knocked down, I was just wondering what the current council will be voting on and when that may take place. Um if this is a, something that's gonna be brought to the council.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Last call. Okay, I'll now close public comment, um so we did give consideration to whether or not a marijuana dispensary should be permitted within Verona. Um early on in the state's process, uh we made a decision. Um, early on in the state's process, uh, we made a decision to insert a prohibition, um, on the sales of marijuana. I believe we did it both into our land use code and into our town code.
Okay.
We opted out.
We opted out, right, right. So we did that. Um, it actually was inserted, you know, went through zoning review and so on. Um, and we did that for a couple of reasons because at the time. The regulations around marijuana dispensaries had not been established by the state. And there's a five-year period. If you opt in, you are opted in for that five years. Um, so we took the safe approach at that point in time, um, to opt out. Uh, we did say that we would look at it again in the future. We had, uh, some residents here in Verona. Who had received a micro business license. Um, they did. Come before us asking if we would reevaluate the code. Uh, we went through a fairly expensive, extensive process of discussion up here. We did have an expert up here. Um, and there were a lot of opinions about it. Uh, from there, basically flows to, you know, what are the opinions of the governing body? And we are, you know, not all one unit. We each. Have our own opinions. Uh, we've stated them on the record. I've. Stated mine in the past, but I'll give it to you again this evening, which is that I am not in favor. Of the recreational sale of marijuana within the township of Verona, and I look at it. I use the same line every single time. I look at it as a land use issue. Um, I look at it in the context of all of the other uses that we do not permit. Within the township such as tattoo parlors, twenty-four seven convenience stores, drive-throughs, et cetera. Um, that simply in the interest of the retail environment, uh, that we wish to maintain. I personally don't see a marijuana dispensary. As being part of that environment. Um, I did go up and visit, uh, at one point in time, we had a proposal from a commercial, larger commercial operator, G T I. I went to Patterson. I visited their store, Rise. Um, as much as there, they seem like a good operator, it still didn't seem like it would be compatible. One of my principal concerns with it is that we have a longstanding prohibition on covering the entirety of the windows of a business. Whereas state law requires that they cover the entirety of the windows of the business. Also, those are still all cash businesses, which has its own concerns regarding, uh, cash pickup, security, et cetera. Um, so my personal opinion, I simply would not like to see it particularly because anyone who, um, feels that. Marijuana is a, is a necessary product. Can get it through delivery or they can go to one of the dispensaries in the neighboring stores. Um, I also look at the argument for the tax revenue for it and I say, first off. Uh, the numbers may or may not be, as the market saturates, what the estimates are given and in any way, in any case. Um, the numbers are not large enough even for me to. You know, to try and overlook some of my objections. And I also say that a, uh, dispensary cannot be a fantastic generator of tax revenue and also not a traffic generator. Um, we have discussed, um, drafting a full ordinance and putting this. In front of the public as a public question potentially on the November ballot. Um, if we did, it would, um, you know, we'd hear from the public's voice, but it would be a specific question as to. Do you believe that it should be permitted under these rules in this place? Uh, which is very, in my opinion, is a very, very different question than. Um, should recreational marijuana sales be permitted within the state of New Jersey? I don't think that that's the same question as should there be a dispensary in my town at a shopping center down the road. Um, so I can only speak for myself. Like I said, there's five, uh, normally five people up here with five different opinions. Um, and I'm going to let anyone else weigh in who wants to, but that's my statement in my opinion on a marijuana dispensary. So I'll let the deputy mayor, Diane, if she wants to.
Yeah, I think what's really, I think what the essence of the question is, is do we have any active plans to? Um, draft up a zoning ordinance, um, to put marijuana, a marijuana-related dispensary. In January about this. We have not had a follow-up conversation. Don't actually, we've listed already tonight. We have a whole host of things that we're working on and I think the council already pivoting. To looking at zoning changes throughout the entire municipality that we need to make. Uh, based off of our new master plan. I would say that as we get into those zoning. Conversations with the master plan, I think the subject of cannabis will. And as part of those larger, broader conversations. On all the changes we need to make in a particular zone. And I think if you read our master plan in Pilgrim Plaza, we actually have to make a host of changes. And we really should be getting feedback from the public on all of those changes that the council wants to make, which we have a very robust process for doing. So I think it's at that time, whether or not the governing body at that time wants to add cannabis to the mix. Then that's something we would alert the public and we'll begin to have all sorts of conversations. I just want to thank the caller on the phone. You, uh, madam, for coming here today and expressing your opinion. We actually really do need to get a lot of feedback. We had a very public conversation about this in January. And except for one resident who wanted to set up a business in our community. We had no public feedback at that session from members of the public. So I really appreciate you taking the time to come here today. And I just think, you know, if there is a rumor circulating that we have active plans to put. Cannabis in Pilgrim, you know, for the last few months here at council, we have not been making active steps in that manner. It's. Hasn't been on our agenda. Thank you.
Could I ask you how you feel about it?
Um, unfortunately, given our rules of the way we operate our meetings, that's not permissive at that time. And we, I'm certainly happy to talk.
So had I asked it earlier? Had I asked that earlier, you would have answered?
We really cannot engage in a dialogue in this way.
He, he did say, he said his feeling on it. That's why.
And he's the mayor because he's, he's, um. That's where the, we really can't do a back and forth. Thank you.
Uh, let me, uh, there is, we have closed this section of public comment. Again, just, I'm sorry to you, you know, procedurally, there is. Additional opportunity for public comment. Um, public comment at our meetings, um. Is unfortunately not necessarily, you know, we take public comment and then the council. May or may not answer, um, in, you know, and, and we don't. We don't go into a Q and A with an individual audience member, but what we do very commonly is after the meeting, uh, we very. Often will come down into the audience and talk with people one-on-one who are available by email. I can't compel any member of the council to make. A statement one way or the other. Um, everyone has the right to say what they do and don't wish to do. I've just been. Relatively vocal about my own personal opinion, so I have. No real problem repeating it. Um, and the deputy mayor is correct. There is not currently a proposal before us. Nor active discussions amongst the council regarding a plan. To permit cannabis. I can only tell you about what we've discussed in the past. Uh, public feedback was brought up as well. Some of the feedback that was brought up was actually from. People outside of Verona that were also interested in operating within Verona, so I do take that with a bit of a grain of salt as well. Um, you know, it's. Us arriving at a decision. The problem is that we can't. Really, you know, it's very difficult for us to permanently make law that says there's never going to be. A cannabis business within the township of Verona. If we do permit it, it says that there must be one for a minimum of five years. So this is a very interesting and sort of. Precarious issue that we're on now. Um, and the short answer is that. Public feedback from people that are willing to come in and speak with us, as you just did here in person, is very valuable to us. Um. When I was getting a lot of public feedback, there were people that were proponents of it, but. As I started to distill it down, it was a group of names that I recognized very frequently. There were some very. Ardent supporters of it. There were some very ardent objectors to it. So ultimately tell us what your opinion is and it's our job to be a representative government. Um, you've heard it pretty unequivocally from me that if it's, if you're asking me. Alex, are you willing to vote in favor of a marijuana dispenser within the township of Verona? The answer is no, no, I will not. So.
I, uh, I'm happy to share. My feeling on it, as I expressed before, and I think it's fair to repeat it. Um. I proposed. The concept of putting it out to a public referendum, uh, one of the statements that was made by his colleagues. Um. But not all of them, of course, but the two of them was that we had data come out in our, um. When the state put a ballot question. On whether it should be legalized. And about two-thirds of the residents who voted in Verona. Voted in favor of that. Uh, indicated the desire. The point that I made was that, and I think as the mayor put it before. There's a difference between. Wanting or liking the idea of cannabis being legalized. And wanting it in this town in this place. Uh, which is very different. So, um. That's why we suggested a. Public referendum on it. So we were put out. A very specific. This is what the, the zoning ordinance would look like. This is where it would be. Is this something you're in favor of or not? Uh, because there is a flaw with. Using the original, um. Uh, twenty twenty-one referendum as data on whether it should be allowed in Verona. I think opinions may change as well. Based on the availability of it in close towns and people being more comfortable having to. Um, so. I am fully in favor of that. I have not. Made a final decision because as Mayor pointed out, we are a representative government. Um, and in that way, I think it's very important that we receive. Feedback. Um, the recommendation I make is we had a, we had a pretty. Uh, robust conversation on this. Um, some of our council members came out more in favor, some. Were a little hesitant. Um, but this is. Something that you can pull the public records on. I know the, the clerk, Kieran, is working on getting. The videos of those meetings back up. Um, but I would ask, I don't know, uh, Mr. Kieran, if this is possible because questions have come up on this meeting and the discussion happened. Could we prioritize? Redacting this meeting to get it up so that everybody can see it? Is that something we can do?
Yeah, we'll be, I don't know how that redactable it is. And I know that.
If we can look into that, I mean, it may be helpful for the residents to. Be able to see that. Otherwise, we kind of have to reproduce that discussion. So what happened is that we used to have our videos online. These state casts well-intentioned, but flawed legislation. Um, that. Basically, print itself proposing anything that could have somebody to address in it. Uh, if they're covered. By protections of the one enforcement officer judge, et cetera. Um, so the meeting. Uh, videos had to come down. But if there's a way that we can redact or I'm sure Mr. Neil and his team can help with that and maybe get that. Uh, conversation back up quickly, that would be.
Okay, uh, come home.
Thank you. Um, with regard to. I believe that all five of the council members actually voted in favor of exploring. While that wasn't a vote. To have a facility. In Pilgrim Plaza, there was a vote of the five members and it was unanimous to actually consider that. Pilgrim Plaza. As a zoning option. There was discussion about a referendum and otherwise. But if there is miscommunication, that's possibly where it comes from because there was a vote and it did involve discussion of Pilgrim Plaza. With regard to myself personally, I am not a recreational user. Cannabis, I personally find it to be unappealing. But I am interested in revenue generation for this town that doesn't come from your property taxes. Um, there are, um. There are opportunities that come with a cannabis dispensary that could actually provide some decent funding to this community. We do have a. Struggle in this town. With ratables and so as we talk about infrastructure improvements and the costs associated therewith. We do have to struggle with balancing our budget and ensuring that that money isn't going to exclusively come from residential homes. And property taxes. So that's where my focus is. It's not about liking something or not. It's really about, from my point of view. It's really about the dollars and cents of it. And whether or not it's something that would actually be beneficial to the township on a larger scale. And as was referenced, it did seem like the vast majority of our voting. Our, our voting constituents actually did favor the concept of legalized cannabis. And so whilst others can make the argument. That that's different than approving it in one zone or the other. I would agree that that is different than that, but that's why we have a public process associated with the zoning changes, et cetera. None of that has moved forward, however. So nothing is on the table currently and there would be further public discussion about it if it were to be brought. And as, um, the deputy mayor artfully put forward, the master plan actually talks. Much larger zoning changes, which we have actually, rather than doing. These micro approaches, we've actually kind of taken a step back and we were looking at it more broadly, like let's. Actually look at. Implementing this master plan and what larger zoning changes we have to do. And that is also going to be a very public process. So with that said, I do want to pivot to Mr. Tonko's, um, comments regarding, um, backflow and Pacman and our wastewater treatment. Because sir, I can empathize with you so significantly. I understand. How. Challenging it is to get backflow. I actually do. But, um, I do, um. Want to say that. This has been. This was my motivation for running two years ago because it first came to my attention in twenty eighteen. When we had the catastrophic flash flooding event then. That our wastewater treatment plant was completely underwater and unable to handle the stormwater inflow that it gets. From major storms. That happened again in Ida and obviously this was a major rain event and it happened again and I'm so sorry. For your experience and you're right, this municipality does need to do better. It has been forty years since we've done major significant upgrades to that wastewater treatment plant. We absolutely need to do more. And I am, I, I have been pushing this administration. I was elected. I know that we do have. Studies, um, that we are working on and I can turn it over to Mr. D. Further.
Um, I'll just, uh, since I did not give you the answer yet, uh, first off, thank you for reaching out, um, same sort of thing that I. I'm very sorry for the situation that you are dealing with. I did speak with Chuck Molinaro that day. Apparently we hit an eleven million gallon, um, peak. I think the plant is four and a half million is the rating of it, uh, roughly. Um, and that is stormwater overflow. I mean, it's a combination of stormwater that's coming straight into the plant plus the infiltration. Into the pipes. Um, I would say that it's probably unreasonable for us to upgrade the plant itself to be able to pass. Eleven to twelve million gallon, um, rating without a very large reconstruction. But what the goal is, is how do we prevent eleven million gallons from getting into the plant, which is a lot of it is the collection system. Um, for flooding events, we've talked about the potential of berms or flood barriers at the plant itself to prevent Pacman River overflow into it. Um. We have put a lot, I know that you've heard this from us a lot and you've heard it too many times to the point where it's hard to, you know. Hard to, hard to hear it again and accept it. We are working, we. Are concerned about infrastructure. We know it. We've seen it. Um, this is a lot of work. We are the wastewater treatment plant, the wastewater collection system. Um, we're going to be working on that one. I'm going to let Mr. Diaco jump in, uh, but we seriously, we do understand that we have a need to get to the treatment plant. So.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and yes, we, we have the township engineer. Uh, the Boswell firm and I had Mr. Boswell himself. In with our team to review, um, the plant. Um, we, we will have a resolution after. Through the, all the previous reports that were provided to this town. Uh, from former firms, multiple. Town in particular, and they'll be doing a complete comprehensive review and recommendations for improvements of the system. That has not been addressed in thirty some odd years. Most of the meetings I've had over the past few months. With the firm has been relative to the sewer treatment plant. And applications, uh, that were submitted to the D E P on the plant. Because it, it is completely flooded. And the storm drain system need. In time, uh, to. Address where the I N I is exactly coming from, that's flooding plant too.
You know, during one of the major flooding events, I actually, just that day, you know, this was a couple of years ago. I showed up at the plant during the flooding event as they were trying to, you know, put everything back together there because I wanted to see what. I, when you tell me the plant is flooding, what does it actually look like when the plant is flooding and it's? The, you know, the inlet basins are completely flooded over. There's simply more water pooled. The plant goes underwater. You know, and that's a combination of us doing, um, you know, flood barrier work, uh, preventing the, the I N I that we talked about, et cetera. So there's. You know, we are, we know that we have issues and we know that those are issues that affect residents and, you know, you're. Close to the plant and then right up next to the trunk line. So all I can say is we're working on it. Um, I, you know. We will get there. We will, you know, we will get there and we're going to do what we need to do. So I appreciate you.
And, and we don't have all the answers yet and hopefully we will.
Okay, any other comments, uh, on this segment of public comment? Thank you very much. Uh, there will be additional public comment sections if anyone wants to stay around. I just wanted to make sure in case there's anyone that did, uh, have a recipe to. Get to, uh, move on. But with that, I will return to council members' reports and pass it on to the deputy mayor.
Oh, thank you. Um. Thank you very much. Um, I attended, oh, I just want to give my due thanks to. The councilman, uh, McAvoy and his family for the, um, passing of his mother, the. Um, I am, I'm really, uh, feeling a lot for my colleague and, um. I, um, I hope he and his family, um. Have her memory in their hearts. I know they do. We attended a wonderful service today. Um, I want to thank the Islamic Center of Verona. I went to their celebration for the end of Ramadan. And it was really so much fun and I'm just struck with how family-oriented the entire community is. Um, and it was really a joyful celebration. I love seeing the children in particular with their. Uh, new toys that they got at the, um, as part of the celebration. Um, I attended the, um, uh, Verona Municipal Alliance Committee meeting. Uh, they helped to set their budget at that meeting and they're adding, uh, to their budget a donation for project graduation. Uh, there's many meetings coming up, um, that I serve as a liaison for. Sustainable Verona is having a meeting this Wednesday at seven P M. Uh, the multicultural inclusion and accessibility committee is having, um. A rescheduled meeting this Thursday, um, the fourth. a rescheduled meeting this Thursday on the fourth. And the shade tree committee meets on Mondays at five P M at the community center. I want to thank the Junior Women's Club of Verona for hosting the candidates forum and all the residents who came and all the residents who submitted questions. And I do want to encourage everyone to vote in the municipal election. It is on May ninth. And as many residents know, it's a low turnout election, only about one in four residents do vote. And I want to thank our municipal clerk Jennifer Kirin in advance. It is quite the day to run the elections. And I want to thank her for all of her accuracy and hard work that she puts, puts into the event and all of the poll workers at work. And I understand that there's going to be a lot of high school kids working the polls this year. I heard something about sixty, close to sixty possibly.
For this, for this election, it'll be thirty.
Oh, this one thirty.
Two, about two at each.
Okay, wonderful. So.
Trade.
Okay, that's going to be excellent. So that's our, it's our civic duty to go and vote. And I just want to thank everyone for that. And that's my report.
Very much, Councilman Timbero.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the citizens of the council, to the McAvoy family on the loss of Mrs. McAvoy. You can tell when a family has made such great impacts on this town, they want time to run a family. So let's keep them in our thoughts. Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. This is our last meeting before Mother's Day. So to my mother who puts up with me. Happy Mother's Day, Mom, and for all the other mothers out there that I wish them a wonderful day as well. Please vote on May ninth. And finally, I had the opportunity with Mayor to attend the Cypress and Willow Residence Meeting. This is something that I had pushed for to have another in-person meeting to go over concerns. It was very well attended. There's thirty folks in the audience and then a couple thousand more, at least one dozen more, joined Zoom. It was also recorded. It was, residents had an opportunity to ask great questions. I think it means a ton of harm. And the one thing that you know, and this only really happens in Verona, is people were bringing up individual issue situation related to their property. And Mr. Molinaro, Superintendent Public Works, was answering them. I'll be there tomorrow. Here's my cell phone number. My phone rings to my cell phone twenty-four hours a day. Like, here you go. I'll answer the questions. And he was out there right. That's not a service that people get in other places. And it's something that we should be thankful for. While maintaining talent in that area. So it is my hope that this is the standard for all of our future road construction projects, meetings before, status meetings during, and for any project that affects residents' homes and property. So as we move forward with actually purchasing the property and once the bond ordinance is, is finished on Potten Avenue, this is how we should be dealing with that as well and to keep residents. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I too want to extend my sincere the loss of their loved one. I want to acknowledge that in the last month, I attended the Recreation Advisory Committee meeting and, you know, among other things discussed the pool registrations. We do have a tremendous number of families that are registered. And today is May first. And to any residents that are listening, that today is your last day to register before there is a twenty-five trade a fee added to your registration. So please get out there and register for the pool. I know it's a tremendous asset and we do have some major construction projects that will work on this summer and hopefully more to come on that. May move as in move your body because it is physical fitness month. And so with regard to be in having all of our youth sports earlier in the meeting, I think it's just worthwhile urging everybody to get out there as the weather warms. But it's not necessarily always good weather. And although we already had public comment on it, I do just want to past weekend and the impacts it has and the work that we really have to continue doing here and for our residents, so.
Councilman Timbero beat me to it. I always wished my own mom a happy Mother's Day when we're up here. She's one of our biggest YouTube fans, so. Thank you so much for watching from California and also to all the mothers that are sitting up here at the day. So that's a very joyous Mother's Day for you as well. Anyone else? Moving on to ordinances on second reading, Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of ordinance G one into the record?
A bond ordinance amending in their entirety and superseding bond ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen and supplemental ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty for ADA ramp at Town Hall, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Please move the ordinance. Move by Councilman Holland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor McGrath. Now is the time for public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Madam Clerk, could you please read that public portion statement?
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? If you're attending in person, please raise your hand and approach the left hand when you're recognized. If you're attending via Zoom, you may raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button on monitor dialing in by phone, you may press star nine. When you're recognized clearly, state only your name and township or residence for the record. You have four minutes to address the council on this public hearing. After everyone wishing to speak has been heard, council may address your comments or questions and vote will be taken.
Please just let me know when. If anyone raises their hand. If anyone in the room would like to discuss the ADA ramp, please move to the left. Last call. Seeing none, thank you. Council discussion on this matter. We did, obviously, I'll let the Councilman Timbero dive in.
I, I appreciate it. So this ordinance revives a previous ordinance that we did for the reconstruction of the ranch. The revised amount was significantly higher than the original project. And I had, I was very concerned about this, not about putting it forward. A couple of the reasons for, there were some decisions made related to some utility work, putting in a running the lines for electric vehicles and which after discussion appeared to be a reasonable approach, being that it would cost significant amount of money to do it after. But there's also a expense to put in a vehicle charging station without an exact understanding on whether that would be for employee vehicles or municipal vehicles, a future fleet, whatever it might be. And we're still that's on hold for now. But my yes vote on this ordinance was contingent upon receiving a corrective action plan to avoid these type of large revisions in the future. So with your permission, Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Neil could come forward and give us some background on why this is higher and what our action is, I appreciate it. All right, I'd like to, you know, come forward.
Sure. Yeah, from the start of this project, we encountered some issues with poor initial engineering costs. So the, the initial bids actually came in higher, which was the change the first time for more money. Then as we went, there were additional findings, errors that were, were found in the original specs and plans for the project. Some measurements were short. Some unanticipated concrete footings. So some work like that. Then we did add in the infrastructure for an EV charging station, which was approved. But under that umbrella, one of the change orders was a bunch of other work. So one of the things that we, we talked about in our corrective action plan was making sure any change orders are fully itemized. So we know exactly what is included in that cost. I think that would have cleared up a lot of confusion in the first place. So that's something we're planning to do going forward. To make sure everything's broken out with the associated costs and make sure that's nice and clear instead of lumping a bunch of different things under one label, basically.
And how we'll be communicating with our engineering firm and all those other places our expectations.
Yeah, so going in, we've kind of regrouped and formed some new teams around these capital projects. So we will make sure to have administration, the CFO, our DPW superintendent with our new engineering firm. So this project actually spanned now, I guess technically, three engineering firms, which was some of the issues. So that's corrected now going forward. So we'll just have the proper team representatives at the table well before a project gets underway. So we could try and identify any issues with cost, funding and engineering, you know, well before, so we don't get to this point again.
We had extensive discussion about this and, you know, the intent when we flag these things is never, you know, to flog people for anything or to, you know, there are things that come up during the course of a project, you know, when you, you don't know what happens until you start demolition. So it's always understandable. The issue here was sort of separating things that make the project better and are optional from things that make the project and that are a hundred percent necessary. Otherwise, you can't build the project. And that was really sort of the difference here is, okay, when do we go to the council? You know, what can we approve in the field? What can we not approve in the field? And then again, talking about the engineering, the rare, you know, simple fact is that if there's issues in engineering, that's what the contractor has bid the project on. And anything that's not per the plan is a change order, whether it be a quantity of how much concrete they need to put or how much demolition they need to do. I think, you know, putting in the make ready prep for the EV charging station, absolutely. If not, we've got to demolish our brand new ramp. There's no other way to get to that. So that's, you know, realistically, we wanted to ensure that we are exercising our appropriate oversight responsibilities here and improving process. I manage a lot of capital projects and the types of meetings that Mr. Neil just spoke about where you are having routine progress updates amongst all of the stakeholders and openly discussing the issues in a project as they come up are very important. And I, you know, I trust, given that we have a documented corrective action plan and that this has been appropriately reviewed, that going forward that we, you know, that we'll know ultimately as we go along and that, you know, they'll know what the limits are that can be field approved change orders and what needs to come to the council. And that's really the only thing that we ended up with here was that was, that was the challenge. So I'm, I trust our staff. I trust you know, we are continually improving every single one of our, our processes. So I'm satisfied with what I've seen and I appreciate the additional managerial effort review that's gone into formulating that review of what happened and how to improve going forward. So.
And I just would like, thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to add to that, that I think just letting the council know, which you've already done with current, some current ongoing projects. So as things go awry, just that short note to the council, hey, you know, this project, we approve these change orders in the field. You know, will be really important just to keep us up, up to date so that we understand that this, you know, project has made some small adjustments. And then of course, there's if it hits a certain threshold, it has to come to us for approval before anything's done. So thank you for that.
Anyone else? Okay, that being said. Even further discussion from the council, Madam Clerk, which please call the roll.
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tamboro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen passes four zero would be published according to law.
Thank you very much. We have one more ordinance on second reading, which is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title of that ordinance into the record?
Fixing the salary and compensation of a tax collector, chief financial officer.
Okay, much. Somebody likes to move the ordinance. So move by Councilman Tamboro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by
No, she can have it.
Councilwoman Holland, I don't think. All right, now is the time for public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen under the previous public comment statement. Mr. Neil, please let me know when comments open. And also if anyone from the room needs to comment, please come up. Give it a couple of seconds. Last call. I see no one. I will close public comment. Any council discussion? I will just give a very brief discussion that we have made this role permanent for a very well called by employee who has demonstrated her aptitude and we're very pleased that we have her in this role and I'm very proud to support this adjustment towards salaries. That being said, okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tamboro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen passes four zero will be published according to law.
Thank you very much. All right, ordinance H one, we already passed on first reading. We have this ordinance H two on first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of that ordinance into the record?
Yes, and there is a error in the title. It should add the capital water and sewer capital. So I'm going to read it with the change.
Please go ahead.
A capital ordinance appropriating seventy-five thousand dollars from the water sewer capital improvement fund for the hydraulic study, preliminary design, and NJIB applications for the Claris Drive pumping station.
And somebody, please move the ordinance. So move, move by Councilman Timbero, but second, second by Councilwoman Holland. This is pretty much as the, as it says, we do have to resolve a longstanding water pressure issue at the Claris Buildings. We've done extensive engineering research on this. With multiple engineering firms, we've taken field pressure readings, we've evaluated the layout of the piping system. Everything indicates that the way that this is going to be solved is with a pumping station. And it needs to go through its engineering design. So we know precisely what that pumping station might look like and then can move towards cost estimating and the remainder of the project. Is that fair, Mr. Diarco?
Very, very sure. Just, just remind, if we can, Mr. Mayor, that the water pressure issue isn't simply what is coming out of the shower. It's, there's a fire suppression concern with low water pressure. So this is an immediate and necessary project to support the residents of these buildings in the event that there is an emergency.
Right. Our fire department does have an operations plan for that location in the event that this ever actually becomes a practical issue and a plan for additional pumping. But that being said, we don't want that to be the situation. We want to have, you know, the required fire flow and pressure hydrant as well as for the building's domestic water needs as well. Any further comment? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tamboro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Mayor, H two will be numbered ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. It will be published according to law and a public hearing will be held on May fifteenth.
Thank you. And now H three, Madam Clerk, please read the title of that ordinance into the record.
The capital ordinance appropriating fifteen thousand dollars for the pool capital improvement fund for the splash trap project at the community four.
Somebody please move your, so. Second by Councilwoman Holland. If Mr. News, this is essentially a change order. Mr. Neil, would you like to explain a little bit of change?
Sure. So this specific ordinance, we have encountered some change orders with that project and we are getting near the budget max. So this is really, you know, from the recommendation of the CFO to give us a little bit of a buffer just in case, we don't anticipate anything else coming up. We did have some additional concrete recently that we had to add to it for retaining wealth, which did bring us our costs higher. So this is to give us a little buffer, cover some of the, the bond council costs to associated with the project.
Okay, so any questions from the council? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilwoman Tamboro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McAvoy? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Mayor Ordinance H three will be numbered twenty twenty-three dash nineteen. It will be published according to law. Public hearing will be held on May fifteenth.
Thank you. And we have ordinance number H four for introduction. Madam Clerk, please read the title of that ordinance into the record.
Creating a chapter eighteen of the Township Code entitled Multicultural Inclusion and Accessibility and Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Councilman Tamboro indicated he'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, Mayor, could you move this to unfinished business, please? There were some items that Councilman McAvoy and I had asked for in the last meeting that we have to still have discussion. So I'm fully in favor of the of the ordinance, but there are some matters that we had regarding staff time and overtime that we haven't gotten information on yet, so I'm not prepared to say it at this point.
The councilman merely wants to have a more extensive discussion around, you know, just continuing our discussion from this. I would still, you know, be in favor of hearing this for, for first reading, unless there's a showstopper reason why, but I'd like to go ahead and accommodate it for the last.
Doesn't really even, I don't want us to be in a position where somebody has changed that we're back at first reading. This seems more logical. We're not really in a rush to do this. It doesn't inspire. We have a resolution. Just, we did ask for information the last time. I'm still disappointed that we did not get it. And it seems like we're rushing this through. We don't really need to. It's something I've supported all along and will likely continue to support almost a hundred percent, maybe support, but we do have obligation public to analyze the staff hours and the time, the opportunity cost as part of the committee to see if we can make any recommendations before adopting. Any more?
Should we make, move this discussion into new and unfinished business as he suggests? And then let's have
I'd like, I'd like to have the whole conversation in new and unfinished business. We're not, you know, we're only relocating this in the meeting. We're not tailgating it, kind of tailgating it from discussion. All right, so moving on to the consent agenda, we have three sets of minutes. Did anyone have any? Um, all right, um, so moving on to the consent agenda, we have three sets of minutes. Did anyone have any changes, uh, to that? Okay, um, as far as resolutions go, we have dedication by Ryder for the, uh, vendor, we have the Low Sap certification. Um, contract with Baker and Taylor, which, uh, if I remember correctly, was for, uh, related to repair of water main breaks.
Library books.
Library books. I'm sorry, that was. Oh, capital, I'm sorry, I. Water main breaks, library books, I mean, you know, same company could do both. Yeah, same, same company could do both. I'm sorry, I'm doing these by memory, sometimes. Capital Supply LLC, um, and also as an excellent Hendricks appraisal company, which does, uh, appraisals for, uh, for, uh. Uh, aspect to tax purposes, Spatial Data Logic, which is a software package, it's used in multiple departments throughout the township, um, manages a lot of different records. According for construction code, informants and so on, and many other things. Uh, the resolution urging Congress to restore the full deductibility of state local patches, this is the. Salt tax, um, that has been discussed, uh, would like to see that, that cap be eliminated. Um, and then we have executive session this evening, depending on going into state of litigation, contract negotiations, personnel matters. Detective attorney also mentioned, um, potential property acquisition, uh, and there are no licenses and permits this evening. Uh, would somebody like to move the consent agenda? So moved, moved by Councilman Tamboro, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, I'll call for, uh, public comment on the consent agenda items only. Uh, Madam Court, please, we have the right of public comment statement to move a little bit.
I'll zoom again. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on the consent agenda? If you're attending in person, you can raise your hand. If you are attending via Zoom, you may raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button on your monitor. If you're dialing in by phone, you may press star nine, you recognize. Clearly state only your name and township of residence for the record, and you will have four minutes to address the council. Um, on the consent agenda only, after everyone wish to speak has been heard. Council may address your comments and your questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Neal is looking up, can you see any hands raised? Just a couple of seconds, last call. Okay, close public comment, any council discussion on the consent agenda?
Uh, just. Two items, Mr. Mayor.
Please go.
Uh, the first, I guess, question for the administration, um, STL, Spatial Data Logic is a pretty expensive, uh, software package. We're using portions of it, so maybe if you could help us before understand how we're going to use more of it as we, we know.
Yeah, so currently, right now, um, STL does offer a lot of different modules. We primarily use it in the Fire Prevention Bureau and the Building Department for all of our inspections. Our inspectors use it heavily, um, we've used that for a long time in there. We actually, we also use it for animal licensing. Um, the assessor's office uses it, um, a little bit, a little lighter than the building department, but they do access it. Um, and the goal is to actually use it for lead inspections, um, which we're hopefully going to have some updates for you very soon. Um, they have a specific module for lead inspections, um, that would be included in this cost, so there would be no additional cost. Um, and then. The goal would be to get, um, some of the other departments using, using it a little bit more, um, including Public Works even, um, would probably be the next one. Really like to see, they're, they're constantly making improvements. We'd like to see, uh, better portal access, which is kind of the public facing side of it. Uh, but there is kind of a internal side to that also. So I think once they make those improvements in the platform, we would be able to really roll it out even more across some other departments. The program itself is, uh, difficult to learn at first, so there's some training that, that it takes. Um, so that's, that's kind of where we're at internally.
Thank you, it's really powerful, uh, tool, so.
It is, it has a lot of good capabilities, um, GIS, some mapping, uh, which we do have live on our site too.
Just one other item, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank, um, the administration, the attorney for getting, uh, resolution K. Uh, on which I had asked for in the last meeting, um, regarding asking Congress to support the, the full salt tax deduction. Um, this is huge and the one request, I, it's not, um, is that we also transmit this to the LD forty representatives. Um, who will be representing us in the future, right now. Uh, it's going to our current, uh, representatives in the state legislature, but the great forget it to, uh, LD forty to remind them of our priorities. That's what.
I wrote that when I was redoing the minutes.
Thank you so much.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, uh, Madam Court, please follow the wall.
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Mayor K two through K nine will be numbered eighty-six through and including ninety-three.
Okay, and we have, we do have an agenda tonight, um, we have a resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement. Now, you, local one, three AFL CIO. Uh, OTEIU is one of our two bargaining units, prevents the non-uniformed employees within the township, so. Uh, it's basically everyone other than the police officers, um. That is, uh, covered by a collective bargaining agreement. I'll ask it to either, um, Mr. Diarco or, um, Mr. Away, I just want to briefly touch on, uh, on CBA.
Mayor, thank you, it's a, early standard contract, there's a two percent increase, red light, that means the fourth provided says there are possible changes. And I would recommend, uh, adoption, the authorization from the society.
Council discussion?
I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Diarco for his work, um, and for the job stewardess of OTEIU and somebody who spends, uh. Half of my professional life, uh, negotiating labor contracts, um, I know how. Detail oriented intensive can be, not only for labor, but also for management. Uh, and I appreciate the devotion and dedication of both sides to having a fair agreement that serves not only our employees, but also the township as well.
That's a very, a very good way to put it, so.
And I'd fear to miss without, uh, recognizing the township attorney and Steve, you know, um, working on that contract also.
I'd also like to thank the, um, the leadership on the employee side as well. We consider ourselves as having very good labor relationships here in Verona. A lot of our employees live here, they've worked for us for a very long time. We talked about the service level that we deliver and these are the people that are doing it. But they also at the same time are willing to negotiate fairly, uh, with the township and, uh, we try and arrive at a, at a very fair agreement for both sides, so. I always appreciate that, so I'm in favor of ratification, but, uh, any other council discussion? Okay, uh, would someone like to move, did we move this resolution already?
Not yet.
I'll move it.
All right, move by Councilman Tamboro?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Holland, Madam Court, could you please call the wall?
Councilwoman Holland?
Yes.
Councilman Tamboro?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes.
Mayor M one will be numbered resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine four.
Okay, thank you much, um, and then we have the invasive species ordinance, which is, uh, proposed as well, uh, just for general council discussion, um. This actually, um, I've been on talking with a lot of residents lately, this came up, somebody showed me, uh, their neighbor's property, uh, which was at one point in time all covered in bamboo. From one end to the other and, uh, actually, the residents themselves, uh, tore out all of this bamboo. Uh, except there does have a little bit of it left to go, it's the, the just amount of backbreaking labor that it was, and they did go ahead and clean up on their neighbors' properties where it escaped. Um, this has come up a couple of times, this is a pretty serious issue because it doesn't just affect your own property, it affects your neighbor's property. Uh, we know about Tree of Heaven, um, and everything else that's on here, so this is again, another one where we have sort of carefully researched the issue. We feel it's a, uh, you know, I feel it's a, you know, very timely issue for Verona itself. Um, to me, it's just whether or not the mechanics of the ordinance are, uh, as desired, so sort of open up, up to the floor for council discussion. If anyone has any concerns or items they'd like to discuss.
Uh, first off, I'd just like to thank the Environmental Commission, um. They are an excellent example of a, a commission appointed by, um, a governing body to, um. Provide feedback as far as moving forward legislation, so it's huge and, uh, yes. As somebody who has removed Japanese knotweed, um, and spent hours doing it in the hot sun of, of July, I can tell you how important this is. Not only for the property owners, but their neighbors. My only concern with this is in subsection three hundred dash six, uh, which. States in addition, found set forth herein, the person violating the section shall be liable for damages caused by managing property, um, et cetera. Just not sure that's something that a government body should be doing, is saying who's liable. Should an issue happen, that should probably be left for the courts, but, um, that's not only concern us getting, uh. Stating that in the ordinance as far as the, um. The penalties for not violating it, that's pretty standard for ordinance violations, but the civil liability piece, I would love to hear from your attorney on that piece.
Yeah, so actually, this ordinance is a ordinance that was, uh. Stolen from other ordinance, the Environmental Commission did a great job on research, searching, so I did look at other ordinances and this was, that sentence was in one of the ordinances. You don't actually need it, it doesn't change anything, but I thought it was, uh, it, it, because it doesn't actually find. For liability, you still have to, you know, like if you were going to have an action, you still have to go to court and prove your case. But it just can put people on notice that at the end of the day, if you hurt your neighbor, if they didn't already realize that. You're going to be liable for it to have to remove the, or heard, heard story about removing bamboo and whatnot. So, you know, if that was your house.
Could we change?
We, we can remove the whole thing, it doesn't really change anything, just.
Could we, people I know this. Could we change this out to May?
Sure.
And then I'm fine with it. Burnt, you know?
Yeah, I don't have names.
I would also just know for the council, because of the timing of this ordinance, I don't believe that the Environmental Commission bill out of work has yet renewed it. So maybe the clerk can make sure that this gets sent to them between now and the next meeting, or the first reading, if they have. Um, any large comment for, we'll put it back on for discussion.
That was actually going to be my recommendation, because we have a meeting next week. Send over to the Environmental Commission, I would send it to both air and the vice chair. Um, so that they could share it with the committee, um, and that they could have the opportunity to discuss and respond. Like you said, we wouldn't have to reintroduce it, kind of edits that. Or some material matter that they felt like needed to be in there. I, I did my own review along with some memo and I could like, did capture the spirit of, of what they were trying to achieve, but. Um, if they see something that perhaps. Um, I think it would be worthwhile for them to have that opportunity to voice their opinion.
Sure, and I also second Councilman Tamboro's comments, uh, about the Environmental Commission, that, uh, they're extraordinarily knowledgeable, they take their work very seriously. Um, in terms of offering, uh, quality advice and it's very considered, uh, that's of our most active commissions and, uh, all appreciate and we get something from them because. We know they had extensive discussion about it, so thank you to them. I'm in favor of the same thing, referring this to them for their review prior to the next meeting and, uh, for other councilmen's minor change, so. All right, so is that, uh, general just consensus that that's what we're doing with this? Okay, very well, all right, um, then we.
We're going to talk about them.
That's where I'm going right now.
Okay, great.
Wasn't going to forget about that, all right, uh, so we'll bring up, uh, H four at this point in time, the, uh, mechanical for, uh, classification. Uh, so the councilman's, uh, concern was ultimately receiving, we had talked about receiving or, you know, information about. Uh, the staff time that's devoted to event production, the, uh, costs associated with that. Um, do we have any, you know, obviously that's good information to know from a managerial perspective. Uh, do we have any concerns about the ability to gather that information or other, you know, how we'd be able to quantify? The impact of this?
Um, yeah, so I have some information, I don't have the down to the detail costs associated, but what I can do is I have a breakdown of hours. So overtime hours associated with these, um, in addition to some other events to kind of give you a little bit of a comparison. Um, I just don't have that dollar amount to those hours yet, um, I could definitely zero in on that and get that to you, we just haven't had that.
Is it varies by the employee that we have assigned to?
Exactly, so we just have to go back and look who actually worked each event and then get their, their hourly broken out that way. Um, but I can give you kind of a, a quick breakdown and, and overall, and just make sure also that. The way I kind of broke it down was kind of cultural, religious, um, and then Board of Ed. Other township organizations and then township run and PD, um, in the same. And so, if that makes sense, that's kind of what I wanted to ask also with that.
That, that sounds, I mean, to me, that sounds fine, I mean, I'll trust you to, you know, trying to come up with the form on this, uh, you know, anything that basically you feel lets us kind of just track and know what our, uh. You know, what our devotion is towards, what, how much labor effort we're putting towards effort, you know, events, how much additional administrative overhead there is, um. If we, it's, it's mostly, for me, it's mostly looking and seeing if there's a more efficient way of getting the same thing done. Uh, I'm always very wary when I hear the word overtime because it's just a very expensive labor hour, no matter what department it's in. Um, so that's kind of would be some of our ongoing discussion, um, that being said.
I'm sorry.
Do you have, do you have that to say? Yeah, so I have some number, I just don't have the, the dollar amounts associated with this. Um, so, you know, for cultural, religious events, and that's things like our flag raisings, um, the Lunar New Year celebration. We last year held a special, uh, Ukrainian celebration, um. Pride Month celebration, Juneteenth, um, you know, all those events, some of, most of these are on the MIAAC calendar now, also Hispanic Heritage Run. So the breakdown for those was, um, this is just overtime hours, is, was forty-four and a half hours total for those events. They average pretty much three hours per event. Um, and that's three hours overtime, that's based on the contract, not how long the actual event was. That's just, make that, that's the minimum call out time for a staff member. Um, usually it's been one member from our, our buildings and grounds crew, the Hispanic Heritage Month, um. Celebration did have some bounce house and some other activities, so there was actually two staff members there for that. Um, what I did not include in this was Fair in the Square. Um, since that's kind of all encompassing, so I broke that out, that's kind of a separate event. Um, and it does not include my hours, so I am associated with most of these events, I would say. You know, my time would line up pretty much with that also, um, I don't get paid overtime for these events, so, um, that's just, you know, straight time. Um, and then just to compare that to, so Board of Ed events, um, things like the Food Truck Festival. Um, the Band Festival is a big one. And what was the other one? Mainly the Band Festival and Food Truck Festival, that total to ninety-four and a half hours of overtime. That we provided, and that's a lot of DPW staff, um, with those. Street closings, garbage, things like that, they help out a lot for those. Um, some of the other township organizations. Um, things like the Women's Club, Luminaries. And. National Night Out, that's kind of with PD, um, we did have a cornhole setup, which was for a few hours. Unico had an event, we had the Valerie Fund, which is a big one, the Unico Labor Day Run, so that was kind of included in that. Um, that comes out to a hundred hours of overtime, those sub events. Um, that's also, you know, Juniors, Verona Fights Hunger Celebration out here, things like that. And then lastly, the, the Township Run and then Police Department Run Events comes out to three hundred and ninety-six and a half hours of overtime. And that's everything else, basically fireworks, summer concerts, pool concert. Um, shredding events, the Rabies Clinic. Um, Fair in the Square, Fall Halloween, kind of all of our, our Township Run Events out here in the square.
Um, and the reason, the reason why we, why we incur these events on overtime, um, is it just a matter of, you know, fixed calendar scheduling of our employees? Um, I know that in the past, we've discussed about it, we don't have the ability necessarily to vary schedules around on a week by week basis, um, are there? You know, have we done analysis, looked at this and said, what's the most efficient way of staffing an event? Um, and, you know, have you come up with anything off the top of your head or in early analysis, uh, as to how to, how potentially to do this at a lower labor cost?
Yeah, I have a couple of ideas, one thing is they mostly are in the evening, um, and on weekends, so the large town events are on Saturdays typically. Um, and then, you know, at night, one thing for some of these events, um, I would say for, you know, the flag raising, things like that, one idea that we've kind of had is. We don't necessarily need to hold them at night, um, and, and that's kind of a council decision, how you want to hold these events. I know other towns, um, that I've seen is you have a flag raising, you make a big announcement, we'll take pictures. Just say, you're more than welcome to join us, we are going to be raising this flag tomorrow morning at nine AM in the Civic Center Square. Anyone is more than welcome to join us, we'll take pictures, we'll take a video and we'll share it out that way. That would probably cut, um, a lot of hours out for some of the evening events. So that's, that's one idea.
You, you were talking about, there's a, a proposal went out, a job advertisement for a Public Information Officer. Is this something that PIO could do on their, their regular day versus incurring overtime for other departments?
I think so, yeah, I think we could probably get there, um.
That would, that would be much more economical. On some of these things, you know, some of the, the things that, I encourage some overtime are probably things that. Normal person could do, right? Um, so just to, to keep that, uh, keep that going. My, uh, and then my other concern is, this is time, it's your time, as far as, hopefully that as. We get a, once again, this other position and we can start to move because there is opportunity cost as far as, just goes to show that like. We, you, you have, you provide us a lot of information tonight and you're working on a lot of projects. Um, and my concern is that we should be using our senior executive staff for as much of that as possible. Um, and there is an opportunity cost associated if we ask you to do. Um, X number of other things during the week, we have these other. We have these other projects that the folks in the town are actually waiting, so. Um my my thought. On this was if um you know, we we budget for the actual expenses of these things. Um is that if we could actually think about. An hours budget as well. So a time budget, um we have awesome volunteers on here that are very eager. And just, it would be helpful if we could say, alright. Here's economically, you spoke about this in the last meeting, saying, you're kind of saying here, where's the budget is, alright, here's the township staff budget. This is what you can have. From the township staff, whether it's overtime or salary and employee time in a year to meet these goals. Um and what I think will probably happen at that point is. The committee would be able to recruit some volunteers to take on some more of those responsibilities, but right now. You're a really good person. Well, you always have been, but I think it's probably hard to say no when people are asking you to do something. So if we could have it out, okay, here's your budget on time. Um that would be great because the, aside from like our committees, sectorally, the secretaries and things like that, like the funding board. This is one of our more staff time heavy. Committees. Um and you know, as we put it into our ordinance and make it a permanent. Um fixture in the town. Which is start thinking about. Saying, okay, here's what we can do and here's what we need that committee to do moving forward, and the nice thing about this committee is. There's no shortage of people who are volunteered to be on it, we actually have an access, and I'm hoping that some of the people. Will be able to fill in some kind of like volunteer staff roles. And I know Deputy Mayor was talking about it, but if we establish some guidelines of what. The township administration can provide and what the committee has to, if someone. Think that would be better, I don't think we need necessarily to write this into the ordinance. But to have the conversation before we move forward. Putting putting something in, uh I think would be valuable, and I'd like to to hear that, and that can tie into. Each year, we get the calendar of events that is proposed, that we get to look at. It'd be nice with the calendar events to have an estimated staff time associated with each one. For prep and on the evening, so we have an idea of how that time is being budgeted. Um because there may be a time where we want to expand events, but it might mean having an event every other year or something like that. So that we maximize our time, we can add new events. But, you know, consider them on a on a diagonal basis or something. The community responsible.
Well, I I would love to talk about the substance of ordinance, I I recognize the councilman's comments, um actually, I think we're all looking forward to that new. Personal Information Officer, and I know Steve is as well, I would say that. The committee has always been willing to do as much as they can, um but as. Steve controls the uh marketing for the town, you know, I think we're looking forward to. I know the committee is to that point where they're working with someone who. Uh is able to execute those requests and doesn't have as much on their plate as Steve actually does. I don't think any of this analysis stops us from moving forward. With this um introduction tonight, I provided we can agree on some of these changes, I also just want to point out in. The ordinance itself in section thirty-five, the whole, the the calendar of events was something we actually. Asked this committee to start with as they kind of dipped their toes in the water of. Um helping us um be a more inclusive community. That's a council decision, we could have this committee actually working on a lot of things. The calendar events is actually not being codified into their mission statement because at the end of the day, that's a little too narrow, we want to keep this as flexible as possible. Now, um our municipal clerk emailed us some changes at eleven o'clock today, I just want to point out that. It's the PDF version that we need to work from what we had printed out on the day as there was a a version control issue. So the PDF that she emailed at eleven, I think was the most up to date version, and then from there, the mayor had an additional change, but I just want to walk through. What changed from when we got our packets to this uh PDF version that we got, um. So there was a scriptener's error. In section um eighteen dash thirty-three, in the first sentence of the paragraph, following the one to seven um numbers. So I think we, you can recall from our last meeting, we decided to clarify that the council role was a non-voting member. We also simplified that the town manager or designate. Would be a role and we also, number three, said that um the township manager can point an additional employee to this committee. Um so in the version we got in our packets on Thursday, there was a scriptener's error in the first sentence, so that was just revised. To be clear that, you know, the term of the town manager, the library director, superintendent of schools corresponds with their respective tenure. And then, um yeah, under duties and responsibilities, that's where we took an opportunity this morning to just. Um add a simplification, um so it just reads a little bit easier. Um and this was also, I think in the previous draft, there may have been some confusion on how much we wanted. This committee to come to this council for recommendations. So what we put in here is uh to make recommendations to the council twice per year on diverse. Cultural, economic and social issues within our community and solutions to ensure accessibility. For all community members for our services and programs. Um maybe there was an extra, there's an extra word council that yeah, it's a scriptener. Uh this was to address Councilman McAvoy's specific. Uh question that he raised at the end of the last meeting about ensuring that um we are getting those recommendations on disability inclusion. Um the second bullet stayed the same, and that's really that the um the committee is here to assist the township administration. With the organization coordination, research and management of actions in the community. That's exactly that, in a lot of words, is saying they're here to assist with the planning of, you know, events, they don't own the events. Um again, that's owned by the administration, it's the administration's events. Um but they're there to assist, uh meaning volunteer. And then the mayor had a very good suggestion um that we. Discuss right before the meeting that to add a third bullet here. Uh that the uh committee would issue a report on an annual basis on completed activities of the committee.
Correct, and that came sort of, you know, left what we've seen already from them and what the Environmental Commission has been doing historically with us. I think, you know, I'm kind of thinking for our future, uh seventy years down the road, it's all kind of nice to be able to look. And see historically what has happened during that, the course of that year, so I'd really like to see that, and I think it only needs to be on an annual basis.
Yes, and um I would just like to add that the committee did that on a proactive basis and they sent an annual report um to this council already.
Right, exactly, yeah, it was, so again, as we have, you know, for everyone, as as. People will change on the committee over the course of years, you know, I just want to make sure that sort of institutionalized. Uh is the only reason, they came up with a fantastic idea, I'm very glad they did it, I'd just like to make sure that, you know, it's something that is. Genuinely recognized as necessary because it is very helpful, so.
So the committee members, you know, they're well aware that we've talked about this ordinance for um several times, I personally feel ready for introduction.
I would tend to agree, I mean, on the, alright, so on the 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 point about the hours usage. This sort of goes back to one of those things where you get what you measure and as long as we're cognizant of it and. We track it and we make, you know, we realize that our staff time resources and our ability to pay overtime and so on are sort of not limitless. I don't want to weigh down the, you know, end goal here, I just think that just, you know, watching over whatever the most. Optimal use of labor for events is, uh and then we'll just check in on it regularly and to see where we're going, I mean, I like the idea of having. Sort of an hours budget or something where the town basically says, look, this is, we budget for overtime. We we budget for overtime with logic and reason, this is the reasoning for it, and this is how many hours we've really put towards the function of events. And simply by doing that, I think that that will help make sure that we manage budget according to this. But I tend to agree with the deputy mayor, we've got a, you know, very dedicated staff of volunteers here, um I've been to. A lot of these events over the past year and it's just, you know, they bring a ton of people together, my. My policy always is, I don't ever want anyone to say there's nothing to do in Verona this weekend. Um and that kind of helps, you know, get us there, and I just have to recognize, you know, how much enthusiasm there's been. Uh from this group and how many valuable things they brought to our community, and the other thing that I always say is. I want to make sure that everybody that lives here feels like we've got something to offer them. You know, just simply being able to say that not everybody celebrates Christmas, you know, it's it's, you you know, that we want to make sure that everybody really truly feels that uh. That they have, that this is their place and that their family and and their traditions and so on are ours as well. Uh so I'm really proud of the work that has uh been done by this committee, I'm proud to support it, I do agree that it's the time. Uh to clarify this, there's, there's just not a reason uh in my mind to uh to push this forward anymore, so.
Great, um thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I agree, I think um. I'm comfortable with moving forward with introduction, thank you for identifying additional changes made, um. Uh I did have some challenges following the versions, um and I think the inclusion of an annual report is really ideal, um. I serve as liaison to the Verona Environmental Commission and they're unique commission in the sense, well, not unique, because obviously the. Environmental. Environmental Commission is a set. It's ordinance. We do have other advisory committees, um you know, Councilman Chamboro. Traffic and Safety Committee, I'm on the Recreation Advisory Committee, I am very comfortable moving forward with another. I I recognize that there's always going to be time associated with these events, but I think these events are. Um these are things that the community was desiring, we have, I've only received positive. Recommendations for additional events. Um so it's kind of the more the merrier. With regard to staff time, just in terms of engaging with the committee, I would say that, you know, all of our committees do require a tremendous amount of staff time. Um serving as liaisons of the Recreation Advisory Committee, which, again, recreation is such a tremendous uh external facing kind of township. There's a lot of staff time that goes into engaging with the recre. And and so, you know, there's, there's a tremendous amount on those um. On those committee members, but also on the staff that goes into trying to continually improve our recreation program. I think here, you know, limiting it down to like three bullet points makes it much more manageable. And really keeping the focus on that community engagement um. Is something that that is worthwhile, with regard. Report that Steve just gave. I do just want to note the tremendous amount of hours that are used for GOE events and these other um. Other community events as well as the nonprofit organizations, I think there's opportunities there that we can look into this more closely. And I know we've been talking about our relationship with the Board of Ed and how that maybe is memorialized, I mean, if we have. What'd you say, approximately ninety-five hours um to support Board of Ed events, um and that's not including all the field maintenance. And all the other things that we do for Board of Ed, I really think that there's opportunities for us to. Memorialize some of this, I think a lot of this has been handshake agreements with the Board of Ed. Um so that's kind of totally a tangent from talking the, this particular. I again, am very comfortable moving forth with introduction, um and I think it's a great. I just want to say, I was. I could be, you know, there at the very beginning of this, when we worked on the mission statement, I know the deputy mayor ran with it and she's taken full ownership of it, but I was there.
Provide a great counsel.
And our, you know, I I think, you know, if you go back to those mission statement formation sessions. The whole objective was to really create an environment where people felt welcome. And included in Verona, and um I think that this committee has done a great job, you know, carrying. That mission forward and I'm looking forward to the future, so thank you.
Just that's Mr. Loy, if he feels he has properly captured our uh comments for adjustment, just specifically regarding the reporting, uh was there anything else that needed to be adjusted?
I just sent the revised ordinance to all of you and the and the manager and the assistant. So yes, it's all captured and it's all new.
Okay, great.
So can we make a motion?
Can we review the email before we?
Deputy Mayor laid out, so if there's any scriptener's errors, you can let me know, but it wasn't much of this. I don't. I literally had sent as I said it.
There there's a, there's a delay for it to let you unsend the email as the uh. Alright, now I just got it.
That's fine.
There is, they added that lo- not long ago, you get the little unsent button in the lower left hand corner.
Fingers crossed, I put myself under a lot of pressure doing this.
Well, I read the ordinance uh prior to this meeting last week. And I purposely registered and attended a session, a half day session on. The inclusion, et cetera. Just because I'm included in the ordinance, I need.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any objections to the language in here, anyone else?
It it looks fine, it's revised.
Yeah, okay, um then, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance on first reading, Madam Kirk, would you please read the title of the ordinance into the record?
Establishing the Multicultural Inclusion and Accessibility Advisory Committee by the creation of a chapter eighteen, article seven entitled Multicultural Inclusion and Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Can somebody please move?
So moved.
Well, somebody like a second. Moved by Deputy Mayor McGrath, uh seconded by Councilwoman Holland, uh Madam Kirk, please call.
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McGrath?
Yes.
Mayor Robin?
Yes.
Mayor, this uh ordinance will be numbered twenty twenty-two days twice, and public hearing will be held on May.
Excellent. Can have a little bit of fun up here.
Yeah.
Alright, uh now moving on, I can we have any other newer unfinished business? Uh moving on to general public comment, um same public comment statement read earlier, applies. Uh your name and your city of residence only, no address, uh four minutes. Council may address your comments again. Everybody left from inside the room, so we're still coming up.
You seem to realize that's Steve.
Anyone? One, alright.
Yes, good evening, Kevin Ryan, uh I'm going to apologize in Verona, New Jersey, I'm going to apologize in advance if I missed this, I came in a little bit late. But could the administration give us a? General update as to the effects of the storm on uh. On various parts of the town or uh some of the facilities that uh. Um are currently being impacted. Uh they forecast unfortunately just caused for some more uh. Bad weather and uh. I just was wondering what uh. What plans might uh be in place to uh. To address some of our, you know, chronically impacted areas, thank you.
Thank you. We have anyone else? Last call. Okay, I will now close public comment. Um I will turn it over to the Township Manager, I did, as I've mentioned, uh briefly, I'll briefly mention, I did have a discussion with Chuck um over the weekend. Uh just, you know, because of those concerns about the wastewater treatment plants and he gave me a brief update, so.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um Chuck did report uh that Peckman did not overflow. Uh he did report that our sewer treatment plant was flooded. Um and over capacity from I and I um through the plant. We did have a number of streets that uh did have some flooding. Areas we've worked on previously uh did not uh have issues in the street. The new uh locations have been identified and we're going to be briefing on those locations tomorrow. So that we can address uh the deficiencies. Um the Township Engineer is Boswell Engineering, is doing a complete uh study and review of prior reports. And will be doing an analysis of your true treatment plan for the future. Uh all in all, uh it was not. As catastrophic as we were fearing, um and Verona Lake is also. And uh you know, we have the, the key from the county, it was graciously uh provided to us. And asked for that, so we could lower. Um Verona Lake, so it's an additional retention. They sent to home more water in major, major storms, uh we have that issue in this one.
Your council comment?
Yeah, I just would encourage, um if you haven't already, again, that protocol on when to lower the lake, so this one was just a protracted, like, kind of lawn. Thrown out event, but whereas other things, it's like, you know, a huge storm or hurricane is coming. So they're just so different, you know, and some of them are surprised, so I'm sure you have that protocol worked out, but.
Yes.
You know, when you made that decision, like, it's almost a decision tree, when does that lake, when does the key get used?
Yeah, we uh staff reviews the uh the weather forecast that we subscribe to. Um have a meeting prior to storms to to assess whether we need to lower the lake. And for every inch you lower the lake, it's thousands of gallons going into that. Verona Lake is, as pretty as it is, it is a retention basin, a very large one. And we started taking advantage of that with the county's permission um in twenty twenty-two. So that is inclusive in the plan.
And the weather reporting product the Township Manager mentioned, we do actually have, it's not your typical, we just go to the website, look at the weather. We have a um weather reporting product that we use that is specific to our location and our needs. Um that tells us what the estimated actual impact. Um, that tells us what the estimated actual impact, practical impact of the storm. Uh, within our areas, uh, and it's season specific as well, so they use this to guide snow power operations. Uh, recreation, um, is also on this, public works, obviously. Um, I've seen a couple of these reports and they are, they're a tool for organizations like us uh, that are dependent on 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 weather knowledge, so. That's very helpful. Anyone else? Okay, uh, with that, uh, we will move into executive session. Do we need to take any official action thereafter?
No.
No, then we will adjourn immediately thereafter. Very much, everybody have a great night. Yep, don't forget to vote.